I'd like to call the meeting to order because stand to the fudge, please.
United States of America and the two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kim, are you all set with your call?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Resolved Board of Education approved the agenda for the September 12th, 2022 regular Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Shelly first.
Second.
Second, Tanya. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. Moving on to next portion of the agenda, we have the Board of Education spotlight, and we have two portions for tonight's meeting, so I'll hand this over to Superintendent Thompson.
So I'd like to turn this over to David Kilcorus.
All right, so just to be quickly, we'd like to welcome all our new staff that we've hired this year. And if we could just have everyone, I'll call out by building, and if you just stand or just wave to acknowledge so we know who's going to be in each of our buildings. So we'll start with Ronald's Elementary School. Palmer Elementary School, our new teachers and new teaching assistants. Van Buren Elementary School. Allen Elementary School. Mac Demare Elementary School. And all of our new hires from Baker High School. Dergi Junior High School. Last but certainly not least, Ray Middle School. On behalf of the district, we'd like to thank everyone who was able to make it and welcome all of our new teaching staff. We're really excited to have everyone here. Thank you.
And I know that you're very eager to stay for the entire meeting. That's part of the requirement being appointed. But seriously, if you could stay for this next portion, I think you're going to think this is pretty neat. And also, when you do leave, don't be afraid to take home some food, because I know there's an awful lot left there. So at this time, we would like to have Ben Morton come up here, if you could, please. He's a special, special young man. On his eighth birthday, on his eighth birthday, he's a Van Buren Elementary student. And he asked for school supplies to be donated to the Boltonsville Central School Supply Drive for those in need. The Board of Education is honoring Ben with a certificate of excellence for his kindness and generosity. Ben, you're a very impressive young man, and you're going to be doing some really, really great things. I just know it. I'm so, so very proud of you, and you're exactly what the world needs right now. Congratulations.
Superintendent Thompson wanted me to state that that was the portion that he really wanted you to say. Please feel free, no hard feelings if you want to leave. Okay, moving on to the next part of the agenda, we have the Correspondence Board activities and community courts. And on Wednesday, August 31st, we had Superintendent's conference day. We had a number of board members who were present at the Baker, so if any of you would like to say anything?
I just wanted to report out that I was able to attend, and it was a great opportunity, because it was my first time being able to do that. Both the information and speeches that both Jen and Jason gave were great, and I really enjoyed Jason's interaction with the staff to get them a little bit going, motivated, talking about, you know, their experience with their teacher who really made it for them, so I enjoyed that.
My thought is nice that it's the first time we've had everyone, the staff, in the same room since 2019. And just hearing all the chatter and energy out in the lobby area before the opening day with Superintendent Thompson, it was a really good feeling. It felt a lot of positive energy and excitement for them to meet the kids and just kind of look forward and looking forward to the amazing things everyone's going to do together.
I will say too, it was nice to have a good turnout from the board. I think that's important, and glad that most of you could be there.
And the next item, we had an audit committee meeting before this evening. I think Tanya was going to report out on that, and we'll help fill in anything, but she seemed to be taking very thorough notes.
So I will do my best to channel, Assistant Superintendent Viall, as I report out on the audit. Quite simply, the budget is good, and that is my report. More seriously, I want to thank Sam Schraven, Kim Viall, Jason Thomas, Joe DeBarbary, Emily Hayes, Tim Lynch, Michelle Vanna, Anthony Germano, and Andrea Person, who make up the Audit Committee, and all their wonderful guidance and support in this process. Very quickly, this is, of course, my first time on the Audit Committee, so there was a lot of new learning for myself and some other new board members, and I appreciate the easy access to a lot of the technical terms that often I don't get to use on a daily basis. And I'm grateful we have auditors and business officials who know what they're doing. And if anything, the big takeaway from this experience was, we take our numbers seriously, right? And we want to be responsible and accountable. And if anything from this Audit Committee, that is something that this particular group and this cabinet and this board take very seriously. That being said, we had presentations from, there was a change in the internal audit last year. RFP was sent out. The R, I can't pronounce it, Dark Angelo and Company was selected as the new external and internal auditor, correct? Internal, thank you very much. And then what basically this presentation was about was an overview of the work that they do. And I won't go too much into detail, because I could probably spend a lot of time. There is a handout that was provided to us that we will make available, correct?
Right, they're pretty much going to do a risk assessment. And we'll determine, they usually focus on a key area internally, and they'll make a determination of where we should put our focus on for the internal audit this year, making sure we don't duplicate anything that's been recently by previous internal auditors.
Thank you. And then there was an external auditor, which has not changed, and provided a summary of where we are with our, from a financial operations standpoint. And I will probably defer to Ms. Viall to provide an overview about where we are. We're doing pretty good.
Yeah, so our external audit will actually be present to present to the Board of Education at our October meeting, and we will then present the full reports in addition to the corrective action. It was a very clean audit, a couple minor things that we had already worked on with the board, so there will be more to come at the next meeting.
I appreciate that. And then there were other areas that we discussed, but of note was a report by Michelle Vaughn regarding the Claims Auditor Report, which highlighted, once again, you know, the work that's being done in the district. You know, the reports are coming out very clean, and they're trying to also consolidate and build more efficient systems using WinCap, correct? And so there were a lot of other terms that I'm going to learn and hopefully share and articulate better in the future, but ultimately, we're in a very good position right now financially, and we'll keep you updated as we go through this process together. Any other comments from the Audit Committee members who are on the board?
The one thing I did want to just highlight is the, I wouldn't even call them deficiencies, but the deficiencies that were identified last year were corrected, and they have, that has gone into effect already, and I think it's very important that we recognize that, that those deficiencies are immediately corrected and taken action on. And even just to call them deficiencies, for instance, the payroll certification, that is, they are now being certified, and I think it's important, and I want to just thank everybody to get those deficiencies corrected immediately. I think it's very important to do that, and I'd just like to recognize and thank everyone to get them into shape. So, you know, I know there was a couple of issues of, just, you know, that we were looking at this year, and I know that, Kim, I believe you said that that's already gone into effect repairing those as well. So, thank you for that. Keeps us aware. You know, as Tanya says, money good. We're in good shape here, so it's great to hear.
To your point, I think the responsiveness, they've seen the errors or discrepancies, and they've been immediately addressed. So that, once again, just reflects, right, the commitment to accountability and addressing the issues to ensure that a resolution or something is resolved, so I appreciate that. Sam, do you want to add anything?
Just lastly, we discussed travel reimbursement, and it's going to be an isolated conversation with the upcoming event.
And we did, yeah, we did get some audits by the State Comptroller's Office, and our tax cap audit came back very clean. And then we've had an ongoing audit that started last November with the focus on fuel audit. And right now, that's confidential, and we'll be reporting out on that as soon as it's officially released from the State Comptroller's Office. And just to piggyback on Sam, we did talk about the, what she just said about the reimbursements, but we're going to be sending that to policy, so those people in the policy committee will be discussing that at the policy meeting before the next Board of Education meeting. Because we'll go through that committee first and then bring it to the full board for full discussion. Three new Audit Committee members, and it is incredibly overwhelming, and I was very, I'm very impressed with that report, Tanya.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have some upcoming events. Actually, does anyone have anything else they need to report on before we look forward? I'm not sure if anyone attended anything the last couple days.
Okay.
On Thursday, September 22nd, we have a balance committee meeting. On Friday, the 23rd, Jeff and I will be attending the Board Officers Academy out in Rochester, and Tanya will be attending virtually, I'm not sure what date that is. The Policy Committee meeting and the next regular Board of Education meeting is October 3rd. Oh, excuse me, Skip Facilities Committee on September 26th as well.
Let me read off my page.
The 16th, Jen.
What's on the 16th?
Virtual one.
Okay, thank you. On October 10th, there is no school or district offices will be closed for Columbus State Indigenous Peoples' Day. On October 17th, there's the NISBA Annual Business Meeting, and Wayne will be going to report or vote on the decisions we made for the resolutions, which we'll go over in a future meeting. And then on the 17th, there's Facilities Committee meeting and the next regular Board of Education meeting.
Next up, we have Azan to do the student report.
Good evening, everyone. So, first week of, first week of school is over, so there's kind of a lot of stuff that I could talk about, but I'm going to try to keep it somewhat brief. So talking about COVID on a more positive scale for the first time in a long time. Schools are, as we all know, pretty much entirely back in session. I'd say the most notable thing being at Baker so far has been the lunchroom. There's a lot of kids in the lunchroom, a lot of people being able to sit wherever they like to sit, of course, given rules and expectations. I also know that myself and a lot of other friends that I have, and I'm sure kids all across the district and Baker, were able to take classes that we wanted to take for a while, because social distancing isn't as much of a concern inside of classrooms, and that's a positive thing for me. That's been an art class that I've wanted to take for a while. Last year, I ran cross-country, ran cross-country up until this year. And I suffered an injury last year, which required me to be in the weight room for a long time. Let me just tell you, running with a mask on inside of a building is incredibly difficult. So this year, not having to wear masks for any students that are going to be using it inside of the building, I'd say is definitely a positive. COVID is in the past, and we're now moving forward. Outside of COVID, we obviously, the first full week at, well, in Beville is here. Date one is over. It was a long first day, but it's going to get better as time goes on. Adjusting, of course, everybody has an adjustment period. I'd say that this is definitely an adjustment period for even those of us that have been in the building for a while, myself being a senior. Moving on to athletic events, I talked at the last meeting, athletics had just started. We now have athletics successfully going on. You know, just this past weekend, the marching band had some competitions, cross-country had some stuff going on, as well as girls tennis, and soccer, I think, has stuff going on today. The first varsity home football games this Friday, I know there's a lot of excitement throughout the school about that. Also, at the last meeting, I talked about Baker's Student Advisory Council and just a bit of a follow-up on that. So we ran our, well, the administration, I guess, ran those two days of leadership trainings. I would say that they were a pre-usual relative success. We planned the whole of the sophomore orientation, which went over successfully, and then the, job, whatever, what are we calling that?
Activity fair.
There we go, the activity fair. We planned that one. So as far as sophomore orientation, we had a lot of student help, I guess, running all of it. So sophomores were able to come into the building. There was student leaders all throughout the building that would help kids walk through schedules, or there was staff scattered throughout the building. So any sophomore that had any questions could feel free to ask staff throughout the building. I know last year when we did it, there was a lot of now juniors that, I don't know, it was weird coming into, Baker's a big school, so it was nice to have kids showing them around. The activity fair is coming up this Friday. Baker's got a ton of clubs, so that's basically going to be an event where all of the clubs that have the capacity to do so are going to set up a table in our gym, I think. And kids during their social studies classes are going to have the opportunity to walk around and sign up for any clubs that they might be interested in. I think that's all as far as things that are happening. And then, I guess, again, just a bit of a personal anecdote, it's definitely good to be back. Being a senior is definitely interesting. I'm sure that the whole of the senior class feels that. There's a lot of energy in the schools. There's a lot of sophomores this year. But I don't know, it's kind of nice that everyone's back and everything is somewhat back to normal. It's also the first year where teachers haven't had to sit down since I've been at Baker and go, okay, well, COVID is here, and here's this, and how this is going to be different. We're jumping into things, which I appreciate. I like to learn. So, yeah, unless there's any questions, that's all I have to say.
I have no questions, but Board Member Mattis couldn't be here tonight, and he wanted me to report out during round people, but now seems like the appropriate time. They, her family had an incredible experience sophomore orientation and had incredible tour guides, and are very appreciative of the efforts of the students. Nice job, and thank you for that report. It's exciting to have more and more things added back in the lengthy reports from your perspective. Thank you.
Kim, do we have any requests to speak? Moving on to the agenda, the approval of the consent agenda, resolved that the Board of Education approved the consent agenda pursuant to the attached, can I have a motion, please? Tony first.
Second.
Come on, is it? Tanya, second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Moving on to the next part of the agenda, the leadership report, so I'll pass that back to Superintendent Thompson.
Thank you. May I have the Baker High School admin team please come forward to talk about the strategic plan moving forward? Thank you.
This one's not turning on. Good evening. We are here to present Baker's strategic plan, and I just want to recognize Chris Denton is watching from home. So thanks for your support, Chris. So we have our 2022, 2023 Baker Strategic Plan. I think you all saw this on Friday in your board packet that was sent to you. So we have four strategic goals that we have been working on, three of whom we have been working on for quite a few years now. Those were the first three. And the fourth one was added about two years ago, where we are working on including personal finance, career management, and professional behaviors into our school day, into our course curriculum, and into our activities for our students. The second slide is really just a follow-up to what Azan had mentioned about Baker and COVID being over. And so when we started last year, we were still under COVID protocols and procedures. But by March, the student body really started to come back to life and feel like one, like one community again back at Baker. And so these are just some pictures of the celebrations that we were able to have at the end of the year. It made a huge difference to have everybody together. It created a sense of community. It helped just invigorate everybody to make it through the end of the difficult year. We were able to successfully have Culture Fest. We had a phenomenal moving update, which I think most of you had attended and were able to be a part of. We had musicals, we had the chorus, we had just, there's even a picture of the prom over there. Some fantastic, fantastic events that hadn't felt quite as wonderful in the past as they did last year. And so that just goes to building culture and helping start the school year off on the right foot. So we have, we're going to recap our goals, and then we are going to talk about what we're doing this year to make some improvements to some of those goals. And Maggie's going to start with this slide and go first.
Again, good evening. Great job, Azan. So if you look at the diagram up here, it kind of gives you a culminating idea of what we're doing, this focus is across Baker and in some of, some efforts also across the district. Everything falls under the climate and culture framework, if you will, and the multi-tiered system of supports. Last year, we began with SEL, really making a move toward trying to look specifically at relationships, because we saw with COVID some challenges that came with building and wellness. And so students like Azan came to training and then helped to train staff and students across the district. And then this year, that focus with SEL is really a push toward that restorative piece and continued relationship building. And we have a focal group going on that Mr. Allen will talk about momentarily. But we also have our BLT and our Student Advisory Council, who are helping with leadership across Baker, and our Positivity Project, which is this year sistering with Eldon for some efforts, which will be really exciting alongside the mentor group that has returned this year.
So the next slide is just a recap of our 2021, 2022 action steps. And, and I know we probably said this many times before, and COVID was not wonderful for schools. However, out of COVID for us at Baker came ideas for us to monitor, data monitor students and to provide additional interventions that we had not been doing before. This, the picture that you see is some of our tiered academic and behavioral and social emotional supports that we provided for students. We have one of these checklists for each grade level. The students' names would be listed down the side, and we use this to communicate with teachers. And so teachers are always like, what are you doing? How are you helping students? And so we use this piece, which we continue to use, but it really was driven by the need to communicate during COVID with as many stakeholders as possible. And so that was really a great thing that happened for us, so we continue to use that. We are also continuing to monitor transcripts as an administrative team and use cohort data tracking sheets, where we discuss students' behavioral and social emotional and academic successes, or additionally, how to help them meet success if they haven't found it yet with our guidance counselors and social workers. One of the other things that was also really quite fantastic last year was the addition of Promzone. Mr. Smith was able to make some phenomenal connections with students that really needed that tier one support, and it really turned out to be a great intervention for a lot of our students. And then I think Mr. Allen's going to talk about our action steps for this year.
So I just want to highlight some of the action steps that we are going to provide this year. We're continuing all the supports from last year and moving forward with all those. We are implementing Support Time Thursdays this year, which is an academic support time that we'll provide on a weekly basis, similar to what Dergi does on a daily basis down there with their B time. We also have our Restorative Practices Focus Group. That's made up of 10 staff members, including five teachers, and they are going to be collecting data on our restorative practices and the SEL circles that we currently use in hopes of improving relationships and building upon everything that we've been doing. The circles that we are using are going to be targeting tier one supports in the classroom. We have Positivity Project Wednesdays, which is really exciting, and Maggie touched on that. That is going to be a mentoring program where our Baker High School students will go down to elementary, and they're going to work with those students four times a year just to get them to go through a lot of the character traits, and it's going to be a lot of fun. So that's really exciting, just to work with those younger students. We also have Student Intervention Team that has already been working, and that is our social worker and our school psychologist. They are working to develop and implement processes regarding tier two supports. So we're working on tier one and tier twos this year. We also have, my favorite part of this whole project is that we've had an indoor and outdoor ropes course for several years that hasn't been utilized. So this year, we had it inspected and we had it updated. We also had six faculty members get trained so that they can facilitate it, including me. And it really does link with the SEL that we're working on, because a lot of those skills, the collaboration, self-reflection, is built right into that program, and it's right there for us to use. So I'm super excited about that.
If you switch to the, if you switch to the next slide, it has what Bill was talking about, the project adventure, of course.
And we will also be using it for our leadership training as well, for our class officers, and hopefully for our Student Advisory Council, Azan.
The next slide is about our action steps for Goals Two and Four. And Goals Two and Four are really about increasing academic capacity at the school. And so this year, we have a plethora of new classes. They're listed there for you. And so far, they have had a fantastic welcoming by the students. Data Science and Intro to Guitar have taken off. We knew they would, but they sure did. And Technical Theater One and Two and Performing Arts have a great class roster this year. And Advanced Film is getting its legs under them. Advanced Film feeds in from Intro to Film, and so you need the prereq. And so those classes are all off to a great start. And adding that many classes in one year is just a testament to our teachers wanting to continue to provide additional academic opportunities for our students that are outside of the traditional Regents courses. And so that was really exciting this year. Our departments are going to continue exploring new courses. and coming to Baker. And it's just really all very exciting. It takes time and effort to put new courses together, to write the curriculum, and to go through the approval process, but hopefully we'll have one or two more for you this year. And then the last one is to expand relationships with local academic institutions, and that's specifically in reference to the local college institutions. And so we are looking at a program with OCC, and hopefully we'll be able to get that off of the ground for next year. And as always, we are moving forward. Do you have any questions?
Yes, I just was curious with the, that one, you're starting, you mentioned it, the Thursday, what is that support? You said similar to.
Yeah, so what it is, is on Thursdays, we are going to have time built into the schedule, so we'll have a modified schedule. And what will happen is students will go to their first grade class, and then they'll stay there, but they will have pre-signed passes to go to specific teachers if they need help. So we'll give them an opportunity during the day, once a week, to go meet with a teacher that they need help with. And if they don't, then they can use that time as a study hall. And it will switch, and it'll be in the morning one week, and it'll be in the afternoon the other week, because we do have Bosie students that are in and out of the building during different times, just so that we can accommodate everyone.
This was actually an idea from a student leader, Sarah Juce, quite a few years ago before COVID started. And she had presented an idea to the administrative team and to the BLT, and was wondering why we don't have a built-in support time for students, like why it was always after school, and that some students in different populations couldn't be supported during the school day. And she put this really interesting and great plan together, and then we weren't able to fulfill it. So we've been talking about this with BLT for the past two years, and this year, we were like, we're doing it, we're back to normal, we got this, there's no Buzz Hive, everybody's in the school building. And so it's starting on Thursdays with the hope that if it goes really well and the students and staff love it, that we could add Tuesdays as well. And so from one of our student leaders, which is quite fantastic.
I wasn't sure if you were done, John. Thank you for your presentation. I just have, just a quick question about the Positivity Project Wednesdays when students go down to Eldon. Actually, two question. How were those students selected? And if it goes over well, are you hoping to go into the other elementary buildings? I know maybe because of the location, you might just be starting off with Eldon now.
So choosing students isn't something that we do. They, you know, we're going to, at the Activity Fair this Friday, Mr. Brooks, who runs Positivity Project in our building, he's going to try to drum up some business. He's going to get people excited about the program. It's to inspire students in our building to, you know, show good character. And so really, we're trying to get students to come out for it. So there's no choosing. Anyone who comes out can be a part of something great. As far as doing it at different buildings, not sure how that's going to look. This year, we're going to start at Eldon because it's close and nearby, and we're hoping that, you know, that takes off really well, and then we'll go from there.
I was just wondering about the new courses. How was the attendance? Are you held out for? So, so far, the new courses have great attendance. But like I said, the Advanced Film is one of the courses that has the prereq that's a little more difficult than the others to meet. However, it's got a great, it's got great teachers, and the students in that are so dedicated to producing top-notch films and just media production that it is going to be phenomenal, and I can't wait to see the things that come out of that class. Our Baker Newtons and Leslie Cartier and Melissa Morgan are award-winning, you know, teachers that have award-winning students, so it's just going to be phenomenal to see what they produce.
I just want to say that that slide with the Goal Two and Three, I'm really excited about because I remember when Chris Denton was here a year ago presenting, saying this was the goal of you guys at the Baker, to go through the curriculum, see what's relevant, what's not, really looking at the attendance and see if it needs to be refreshed. And we approved these courses last year. It's good to hear that the moment is there, and it's definitely worth all the work that everyone put in to design the curriculum and stuff. But just looking forward, you know, new program opportunities, making those connections in real-life experiences, bringing those into the classroom where the kid's going out, I just get really excited thinking about what it could be and the work that goes into it. I couldn't even imagine, but the creativity, and I'm thrilled. So it's a great, great start. Thank you.
I just want to comment, I have to, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the energy that you are all bringing to this presentation, which is seeping out of you, that you're very excited about this school year. You're very excited about the things that you're doing at Baker High. You're very excited about Azan, which I am too. He's phenomenal. So thank you for bringing that to us and living that, really. So I, it's appreciated, and it does not go unnoticed. Thank you.
It's hard not to show that with the students that we have and the staff that comes up with great ideas. It really is.
Thank you, guys. Carrie, would you like to come forward and discuss the summer school report, regular education and extended school year, please?
Thank you.
Good evening. I don't love public speaking, but this is one of my favorite things to talk about. I'm so excited. We really, we had a great summer. I think kind of going to what Baker staff was saying, you know, similarly with summer school, this was our first summer back without any remote instruction. Students didn't have to wear masks, which has, you know, been very difficult for our population of students. Kind of what Azan was saying about wearing masks while running, some of our students really struggle keeping their, you know, medically fragile, or they have difficult difficulties keeping the mask on. So to be able to come back without those restrictions was huge for our population. So I think coming into the summer, it had been, you know, a long, kind of tough year. And we were a little bit worried about, you know, wow, there wasn't a lot of time between the end of the school year and the start of summer. And just the endurance of our students, and it really was just, just a great opening, a great summer. And if this summer has any way to predict the school year, it's going to be a great year. Obviously, you know, our, our goals for summer school really are to align with the strategic goals, ensuring that equal access, preparing students for the future. And summer school is so important for our special education students, our students that attend summer school, even our reading program, our students that are, you know, they're tier three students, they're at risk, they have, you know, some challenges to face, and the goal of summer school is to prevent regression, to keep them in a routine, just get up, get on the bus, get to school. Those things are huge for our students. So summer school is very important to them. And, you know, it's, it's not at all, although they work hard, and getting to school every day is a challenge, and they, and they work hard all summer, we have so much fun. And it's just really important for them to be able to come to school and have fun. And I think a lot of our students will call it camp, or, you know, we have other camps going on now. So that's really sort of reduced the stigma, I think, of the camp, you know, summer school for our students. And we have students that are not eligible, and they don't qualify, but they want to be there. So I think that's a, that's a great thing, for sure. As far as speaking to the purpose of summer school, I, you know, I kind of mentioned the routine, the structure are really important for our students, but also, you know, we have focused on language arts, math, life skills even, social and interpersonal skills. And then we're able to provide related services for students that qualify. So those kinds of things, keeping that, students on track with some of those therapies is really important. So then, kind of going into the services that we provide and the number of students that we service, our program has really grown over the past few years. We have added, we now have five integrated reading classes. We have two that serve us a K-one combination. Typically, we like to have about seven students with IEPs and six without, but it kind of depends on, you know, students that we nominate or that are referred, and whether or not they're able to come, but that's sort of the balance we like to look at. And then we have two classes that are second, third grade, and then we have one class that's made up of fifth and sixth graders. Our students that attend the extended school year program, you know, they're compromised of students in grades K through nine. We have about 50 students that attend that program with the focus on life skills, you know, preventing regression, structure. They, they are the students that receive related services, so, you know, keeping their services is important. And then we also have the BEST program, which is the Balden'sville Exceptional Students' Training and Transition Program, which focuses on work skills and worksite behavior, job training skills. And this summer, we had, those students do various jobs, and they really function throughout the school setting as, you know, they're the older kids of our program, you know, they, they interact with all the other kids. So it's really community-based. They do stuff throughout the building, they go off, you know, throughout the campus, they do landscaping-type things, they cook. And this year, they ran the school supply collection. So we had a table set up outside of summer school. We sort of combined those two things, and they were able to greet the people that were donating supplies and, you know, say thank you and greet them. And so that was really a neat thing that we added this summer. So as far as the related services we provide, it really just depends on what the students are recommended to have on their IEP. We provide speech therapy, we have occupational therapy, physical therapy. Teacher of the Visually Impaired is a service that's offered through Bosie's, but we do have students that qualify for that, so we do provide that over the summer. Music therapy, orientation and mobility are for students with vision difficulties who summer really lends to their ability to provide that service because they're navigating, learning how to navigate buildings and hallways. We do evaluations of students who are referred over the summer. And then this summer, we did actually have two Promis Zone specialists we were fortunate to have, and that's a little bit different than previous summers because the Promis Zone specialists work all summer. So they had asked what our needs were, and they assigned us two of our own Promis Zone specialists for the summer. And so they did some SEL instruction this summer, they did a checkout, check-in, check-out system with some of our students, and we were able to provide counseling for students who needed it as well. So that was an addition this summer that was really helpful. As far as instructional programs, we've been using VTAC math and time work reading for our K-nine students for at least as long as I've been there, which is, this is my fifth year, I think, doing summer. Those are intervention programs that are, they're online-based, they're aligned to the Common Core, they're motivating for kids, and they're also scaffold, you know, the reading program, the time work series is adventure-based. So it's not stuff, it's new to them, and they have a lot of fun with it. They're able to tie in activities, like they might be able to align, you know, a cooking activity at the end of it, or some sort of art activity. So there's a lot of fun involved in those programs, which is nice. And for our reading program, we utilize the same programs we use for interventions throughout the school year for students that are getting RTI or interventions in reading, so that's consistent. And, you know, the value of those programs is also that a lot of them have assessments built in, so they're able to monitor progress while students are utilizing those interventions, which is nice. And our teachers are familiar with them, which is good as well. So these are just some pictures of the fun we had this summer. You know, we do a lot of cooking, we have picnics. Teachers are really good at, you know, they'll do theme weeks, you know, like scavenger hunts where students are reading clues, and, or they're fishing for sight words, and, you know, sitting in tents with flashlights, and we try to keep it as fun as possible. You know, you won't walk down the hall and not hear laughter in the classrooms, you really won't. And then, you know, they do lots of other fun things, too. This year, you know, and I think speaking to the fact that we were at Durkey, which was a new building for us, and I think to give TJ a shout-out, if he's back there, the Durkey building and staff were so welcoming. It was a new building, which is obviously, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into preparing for summer school, and anytime there's a new building, you know, it's where we, what classrooms are we using? Where's the air conditioning? Like, where's the, where are the buses going to go in and out? And, you know, kind of leading into those things, what, how are we getting the furniture there? These are big kids, we have little kids. So all of those pieces, it really never felt, it felt like home. And it was a great summer for us, and that was definitely 90% of the fun that we had is how easy that transition was. Rick Boater, facilities, the custodians at Durkey, you know, if you, if we were on Milwaukee, they were there in two seconds to help us with something. So, and because of that, because we were at Durkey, the sports, the football team was outside, and so Carl Siam Lippo and the football team did a lot of stuff with our students. They went scuba diving, they had a lot of fun. So I didn't want to, I wanted to make sure I talked about that as well. And then I think just to kind of thank all the people involved, obviously our extended school year staff, and I know Pat Speech is back there, too, and I, I don't know if I would make it through the summer without Pat Speech, our staff, because we have students that are, you know, have significant needs, we employ a lot of teaching assistants. We have more teaching assistants over the summer than our teachers. And that's a diff, that's different, because typically in a school year, you know, they're, they're not a bigger part of the population. And so I think Pat got sick of me pulling her out of things to, you know, ask her questions and ask for her help, but I couldn't do summer school without her. So I just wanted to thank her. Transportation, obviously, it was a little bit easier being at Durkey because I think our experience at Ray getting kind of stuck in with COVID at the drop-off pickup. But, you know, Mike Tierney was there in the beginning, every day, just making sure things went smooth. Anytime a problem came up, he, you know, we had, you know, students that maybe grew out of their harness, and he was there in seconds to help us with different difficulties or things we had. TJ and Dave helped cook one day when we had a barbecue. Every time I turned around, I'd see Joe or somebody in the circle just making sure everything was going well. And so I just really appreciate the support from all of my colleagues during summer school. And HR department as well. There's a lot that goes into hiring, payroll, all of the things that come up that are just a little bit different, because we don't use, you license the same systems necessarily that we do in the school year, so funny things come up, and the support of everyone just makes everything flow very nicely. Any questions for me about our summer program?
Carrie, if I may add, and Tony, thank you for providing the numbers. So approximately with the STEAM grades four through seven, there were 110. Athletics, K through six, 340. Filming, grades six through eight, 40. Music, grades three through eight. Band and orchestra, 80. And then building upon success, K through six, 270. So again, Tony, thank you for those numbers. I just wanted to add to that, too, Carrie. So thank you.
So do any of my bar colleagues have any questions for Carrie?
Please. Ben? Ben? One of my questions that I provided to the cabinet before today's meeting, what were the outcomes and impact of the programs for students who participated in the summer programs?
So data can be a little bit, so specific data can be hard because, for example, well, for one reason, what I could do is put together a report for you. In the past, I have presented data. We don't have fall benchmark data yet, so we're presenting so early. So I could put together a report once we have that. But really, the goal is to prevent regression. So our students, specifically in our standard school year program, are nicely eligible, so they don't take typical assessments, so that would be hard data to provide. So really, it would just be the fact that they're there every day and having, you know, happy and engaged is kind of the key. Our students in the reading program, we do have information, baseline information and end information that shows that they're growing in sight words and words per minute. And it's about 90% of the students that, when we find that historically, students that, no students don't, don't make progress at all, but some students maybe are a little bit more even, or it's not that they regress, but those students typically are students that didn't attend every day. So attendance is definitely a factor that plays into the progress of those students that do come to summer school.
Appreciate that.
And then what we find is also, we have about no students don't make progress at all, but some students maybe are a little bit more even. Or it's not that they regress, but those students typically are students that didn't attend every day. So attendance is definitely a factor that plays into the progress of those students that do come to summer school.
Appreciate that.
And then what we find is also we have about two and a half weeks before school starts. So we do see still a little bit of a dip. And historically, those students, their assessments from the spring to the fall stay within a forty, forty scaled score point range, which just shows, because star assessment, if a student's in the first percentile isn't the best assessment to monitor their progress, shows that they didn't regress. And I can put together some information for you once we have our benchmarks.
Hi, Carrie.
Hi.
The, so I remember, you know, a few years ago when we were talking about including students in the integrated literacy that didn't necessarily qualify for services, and there was a demand there. And that kind of grew a little bit. Are we able to meet demand for students who want to be part of that program but don't necessarily qualify via, you know, special education or?
Sure, I think so. I think we're in a good place. I mean, certainly you can always do more. But what we do is we have a system where students are referred to the Integrated Reading Program by special education teacher and data, data teams that are, you know, made up of key staff at the buildings. And then the students that are not identified are students that are maybe at risk of, they're kind of on the brink, the staff might have been providing interventions, they're following them, they're progress monitoring, and they're thinking, I think we might need to refer this student for an evaluation, they might have a learning disability. So it's an intervention that we can put in place to see if preventing that summer regression would make a difference. Because at this point, they're tier two, they're tier three, and, you know, they're struggling. And so it's sort of a, those are our priority students. And so those referrals come from the instructional support teams at the buildings. And we do that about February or March. And then we take a look at that, and we start sort of identifying students for each class. And then we start making phone calls. And we prioritize those in need. But what happens is sometimes families will say, you know, we have a couple trips planned, or we're not, you know, we're not interested in that, or that's not going to work for my family. And so as spots open through, from like March till, I mean, the last week in June, we're looking at students that are maybe not going to come and filling those slots. And then even if students don't show up that first day or two, we'll call it home and say, did you change your mind? And we'll fill this slot if we can. So I haven't, I don't think so. I don't think, I don't think there's a large group of students out there. I think it's possible that there are some students that would benefit, and parents would love to send them. But I don't think they fit within the same category of risk as the other students.
Yeah, no, I thought it was good at the time. And I still think it's good that we're looking more broadly at, you know, how can we support students kind of across the board and provide services and integrate, so.
And that's why I think the camps have been a great addition this summer because I think it gives all students an opportunity to do something. And, you know, there are students that love to read. They would love to come to summer school just to be part of the program. You know, and our focus is a little different. So I think it's great that we have some other opportunities for all of our students during the summer.
I have a question online, nobody else in the room does.
You can go first, Jeff, I got a question after you.
Okay. Can you bring up slide five? Because that's the one that brought my thought up. My question's for Carrie, but I don't expect an answer. I'm just going to throw this out there as potentially an idea. I know, you know, summer school is a, you know, great for the students that participate. I'm just thinking, you know, expanding maybe summer school for some opportunities for some of our high school students that are thinking about some of these career fields listed on the screen here. I happen to, I happen to have one in my house that's senior this year that, and that's what tipped me off, I'm thinking of this idea. But over the last year, she's done some job shadowing with some of, not only our speech therapists in the district, but, you know, one or two from outside the district. And it's been a wonderful opportunity for her to kind of decide if that's the field she wants to go into. So I'm just thinking, you know, maybe next summer, and again, you don't have to answer this, just is there some opportunities for some of our high school students to maybe job shadow with some of our teachers and specialists in these areas? So not only, you know, bigger bang for the buck, we're benefiting our students, obviously, that are participating in the school, summer school, but also maybe expanding it to some of our students that could job shadow with some of our, you know, expertise in the district. And maybe, you know, the more aspects of it they see, the more, you know, potentially they want to really go in. And, you know, having been working through this for the last year, I know the counselors discuss this stuff with the students, so they would probably have ready lists of students that are maybe thinking about this area. Or some that may not be, that hey, if they had the opportunity, and the location's convenient, you know, it's on our own campus, and summer's probably a bit easier to schedule their time to do job shadow versus during this school year. So again, you don't have to answer this yet, but just something to think about. I'd love to see if we have some opportunities there maybe to open it up to some students that are thinking about going into these areas. There's nothing like seeing some real word of experience. This slide in particular just kind of made me think of that, so.
I think that's great, and I can kind of answer it a little bit. We, prior to COVID, have had students volunteer, students, we've had job shadowing, and we have had high school students volunteering pretty regularly. So just let us know when it gets closer to the summer, and we'll take you up on that offer. With COVID, we had to obviously limit a lot of that. We couldn't have additional people coming in. But we also employ coaches through the BEST program, job coaches. And most of our job coaches are graduating seniors from Baker. So they come back to us for the summer and work with the students. And it's really great to see them do that. And most of them are students that are headed into the field of education.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, the counselors have probably a much longer list than I could give you, but, you know, of students that are thinking about these areas. Yeah, they've been very good to provide, you know, information on what schools and all that, but there are some job shadowing opportunities, I think, for our students this year. That'd be great.
I need to thank Lauren Hibbard before I forget for the next question. She was an administrative intern this summer, and she was very helpful as well.
Thanks, Carrie. Thank you.
Now I regret letting you go, because that was going to be my question. I was just going to ask based upon the interaction they had with the football team and stuff, if there were other types of volunteer opportunities because they might react, you know, with kids closer to their age and that kind of thing. And like Jeff was saying, with, you know, the career for these people that could be volunteering, so.
Yeah, and it's very motivating for the kids to, you know, work with their peers and older students, some sort of, you know, back to the mentor thing that Baker's doing. Prior to COVID, and I know you would ask that question, we had expanded the mentor program into all the elementary buildings. And we'll get back there. But the transportation is finally back to a place where I think they're breathing. So we'll let, we'll let that go this year, and then hopefully revisit that next year. But I think, to your point, there are so many opportunities to do those kinds of things during summer. And it was really eye-opening to see that. And I think we said that every day, that we need to do more of this.
And just to have the extra hands there, and you said it's mostly teaching assistants, so even having assistants to the TAs, you know, have those kids running around helping out, so it would be great.
I just want to say thank you, Carrie, to you and your staff in the district, having worked summer school for numerous years, I know the hard work that you put into it. And I want to let yours, you know, and the staff know that I received a lot of emails and comments prior to me being on the board about how great summer was this year, and the kids had a blast. And kudos to you.
Thank you, Carrie.
I just wanted to add, as a parent of a student, is utilize summer programming. It has been, you know, it was a really great experience. We utilize it as well. To Jeff and Wayne's point, though, I, you know, I kind of shifting gears, if we're going to start something like that, I think we have to be completely transparent with the parents of the students who are undergoing those services, that there may be some students, and they have an option, you know, as to whether or not they want their student to participate in that. So I think that might be something to consider going forward. I think it's a good idea as well for the exposure, but I do think there has to be some sort of transparency. Maybe something we want to talk about with legal as well, just in terms of that situation, so. But thank you.
Carrie, thank you for your presentation. I have more of a comment and a question, but it kind of follows Matt's comment as well. So in the years past, I recall as well, the program was much smaller in who they could, who could attend and who was eligible to attend. So I am happy to see throughout the last few years that there's an increase of kids attending. And you identified specifically, it's for tier three students who are referred or recommended. And then you spoke about priority students. Are those kids in tiers like two, tier one and tier two? Those kids are like on the board, you know, they're in between? And if so, is there, is there room or there's thought process for summers to come to be able to include those, those students as well? So that they don't have the regression during those summer months?
Sure. So it definitely starts with sort of, like I said, we sort of prioritize the higher-risk students first. But as slots open, we sort of move down. And it's all based on data and referral from the buildings and their data teams. And, you know, it's kind of a hard question to answer because sometimes a team might refer a student who's a tier-two student, but maybe they now missed a lot of school for a medical issue or something was going on at home. And so there can be different factors that might play into the referral to me or to like, sort of, the data sheets that we look at. And as we sort of go through and prioritize, we try to get in as many students as we can. I would say there's definitely a higher need at the K-1 level. Those are kind of the students that, if there are students that we don't get to, those are, those would be the ones that, you know, there's probably about, I would say approximately ten students that would benefit. As far as to whether or not there are students out there that are not being referred based on our process, I'm not sure. But that's something I could ask our school psychologists and our building administrators as far as their data teams, you know, are there students you would refer if the criteria was different?
I would appreciate that.
Sure.
Personally, I would like to know. And then I'm sure I know that there's other families or parents that kind of fall in that, that in-between. And if you do know from your, you know, building leaders and administrators that there is a need for that, I think it would just be another great service and the Matt's point to focus on all kids, to incorporate every specific needs that there are.
Thank you.
It was a busy summer for you. Thank you for everything that you guys offer, you know, keeping those kids connected and making sure that they don't lose as much, if anything. And you guys do a lot of good work. I really enjoyed that conversation, this little bit, this side thing about different opportunities and a lot of different things to consider, you know, the legal part of it, the opportunities that we could do. We always talk about growing our own. You know, sometimes I think we forget to look internally at the needs in education right now, and how do we inspire these kids to work with other kids? And, you know, a lot of good points, the younger kids look up to the older kids, they desire to be them someday, and having those right role models. And if you can do that, it'd be fantastic. And, you know, making sure that's publicized. So anyone who is interested, who counselors may not even know of yet, that'd be fantastic. Definitely good things to look forward to, if we can do things like that. Not that that's on you, but I just really liked the conversation. It came from your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. So you've heard about the opening day. It was a huge success. It obviously had a much different feel in years past. And, you know, again, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank all of the people that made everything happen and pulling everything together over the summer. And it takes a tremendous amount of work to strip down a building and then build it back up again. So kudos to our custodial staff, Rick, our buildings and grounds. And again, you know, I don't want to forget anybody. I know there were a lot of summer workers as well. So just, and teachers were busy all summer. So it takes many hands, and I'm just very proud of everyone. But it was a tremendous success. We, I think I made it to six out of the eight buildings. I know Joe and Renee and Tony, and a lot of people are out in the buildings as well, bouncing around and just saying hi to people and seeing all the smiling faces. So it was, it was really, a really huge success, so. Again, I want to thank everyone. David, did you have anything more that you wanted to add for the new teacher overview?
Yes. So just for the report here, I really just want to go through, if we can go past the reduction. To just review a little bit about, you know, where our new teachers, our new teachers have come from, and a little bit of information about them. So for our district's newest teachers, they've earned undergraduate degrees from eighteen different colleges and universities, including SUNY Potstam, SUNY Geneseeo, SUNY Cortland, SUNY Oswego, SUNY Empire, SUNY Fredonia, SUNY Brockport, SUNY Albany, SUNY Binghamton, Syracuse University, LeMoyne College, Huntington College, University of Arizona, Hofstra University, Providence College, Nazareth College, Clarkson University, and the College of New Rochelle. The completion of a graduate degree is a prerequisite of attainment for the professional certification. The graduate degree programs of the following institutes of higher learning are represented among our new teachers. SUNY Potstam, SUNY Cortland, SUNY Oswego, SUNY Empire, SUNY Fredonia, SUNY Plattsburgh, SUNY Binghamton, Syracuse University, LeMoyne College, Nazareth College, Russell Sage, University of Massachusetts, the University of Northern Colorado, and the University of Cincinnati. In addition to the aforementioned information, it's also important to point out the average grade point average of our new teachers. The average GPA for undergraduate degrees was three point two-six. And the average GPA for our graduate degrees is three point eight-three. It's also important to note that of the thirty-one new teachers and special areas staff, twenty-six of them have completed their graduate coursework. I'd like to mention that thirty-one of the new hires, fifty-three percent come to us with zero to five years of experience. Thirty percent come to Baldon'sville with six to ten years of experience. Seventeen percent of our new staff has come to us with eleven-plus years of teaching experience. In conclusion, the Baldon'sville Central School District should be proud that it continues to attract, excuse me, attract substantial numbers of applicants for teaching employment, and that it has resources to expand the scope of its search for outstanding educators. The district's building and program administrators are committed to making staffing decisions that reflect the evolving needs of our students and community. The resource department is committed to expanding recruitment to capture a broader geographic area in the coming years to assure we attract the best possible candidates. And I'd just like to say, I think that, you know, every year, you know, recruiting and staffing has become more and more difficult over the years. But Baldon'sville continues to attract very high-level educators. And as you can see, even seventeen percent of them have come to us with eleven-plus years of experience. So we're getting educators that are coming to us that want to be here in Baldon'sville, even though they've had long careers in other places. And that's, you know, very important. We're very excited and proud to have these educators.
Dave, I just have one question. Is this a type-o, or do we really only have one person apply for the English position? That's correct.
It was a long-term, it's a maternity leave, so it's not a.
Not a full-time car assessing, oh my gosh.
Right.
You don't have many English teachers running around out there wanting jobs, okay.
That's why I don't go.
Because that's typically not a high, you know, or difficult area to recruit teachers. Like, oh my, what's going on? Okay.
Yeah, there's definitely some factors that play into the number of applicants based on, you know, whether it's a full-time position or a temporary position, et cetera.
So you said that you want to expand like the reach going forward for like recruiting, are there different strategies, like for the, like, what would you consider like a high need, a very difficult area that you foresee coming up to fill? And have you thought of strategies besides just expanding the region, but maybe just different strategies to try and attract teachers?
It's very difficult. I can tell you there's a lot of different, you know, aspects that play into what's a high-need position. I can tell you that one of the things we're running into, I mean, luckily we've been up to film, but. special education seems to be more and more of a difficult position to hire staff from. And the staff that we do bring in have been very high-level staff. And then they've been jumping into general education positions. So we've been in a constant hiring, you know, on table that. So really the recruitment has been, you know, again, looking to get staff members that are experienced staff members in those areas to want to come to Baldenville. So again, sometimes, you know, unfortunately, we've taken a lot of staff members from places like Bosse's and places like Syracuse City where we have great staff members in those areas and they want to come and work for a place like Baldenville because it's a wonderful place to work. And they're very highly, high-experienced educators. But then that leaves gaps in those places. So I try not to talk about it too much because they get mad at us. But we have recruited some from those types of areas.
I have a few questions. If you're with me, I love looking at this type of work. And I really appreciate the effort of your office, Dave, for all the work that you do. So I always think about when we recruit. I also think about what we gain and then also lessons, what we learn from those we've lost, right? Those who have walked away from Beville. So my question is sort of centered on that specifically. You know, in terms of exit interviews with former staff who have left, did they reveal anything about their motivations about why they left the district?
So when we have exit interviews, they're not required. We don't really have required exit interviews. But we have had staff members that have met with us, you know, to have conversations with us prior to leaving. I will say that the majority of our staff resign for the purposes of retirement. And when we talk to them on, you know, their way out, they finish long, you know, very great careers here at Baldenville. Recently, you know, we've had a couple of staff leave. Some leave for other reasons, positions, you know, they come up, they move for families, things like that. And then some of them that have left for other reasons because they were happy here, whatever the case may be, they don't always want a new exit interview. Most of them move, when we do talk to them, they leave because they're leaving for career changes. They leave not just Baldenville, but they leave the education field that we've spoken to.
What is, do you currently know what the attrition rate for staff at Beville?
I don't have that. I'll leave it here now. But I could look at the attrition rate. I mean, we hired, just teachers. We just hired 31 new teachers and we got about 400 teachers, give or take a few in the district. So I could do the math on that and give back to you. But that's typical. I mean, we probably hire anywhere from 20 to 40 teachers on a given year based on whatever the cycle is of, you know, attrition.
So if there's any questions, I promise I'll be done. In reference to the new staff that's coming on board, in addition, I appreciate the list of the colleges clearly. We recruit from, you know, top-notch universities and programs. Incoming teachers, are most of them just focused on one certification or there are staff that has more than one certification?
Most of our staff come to us duly certified, either even, you know, staff from, you know, that had been teachers long ago prior to some of the dual certification degrees that are coming out. Because, you know, of having the master's, you know, requirement, they may, you know, be an elementary teacher and then they become, you know, masters in literacy or special education. So almost all of our teachers are duly certified. They come to us. In fact, when we recruit teachers, so for example, you know, looking for a physical education teacher or health teacher, we always are looking for people that are duly certified in PE and health. The same type of thing when we look for special education teachers. We typically look for special education teachers that are certified, you know, either in literacy or in the secondary level. We're looking for special education teachers that are certified in math or English or other subjects because then those staff members are helpful because we do a lot of co-teaching here in Baldenville. So it's always looking, you know, it's kind of a requirement in our, you know, process, but also the staff members out there are doing that as well on their own.
My final question, were any of the candidates that came nationally board certified?
Say that again?
Nationally board certified? Were any of the candidates that were...
I do not believe any of the candidates we had this year are. We have some candidate, or not candidates. We have some staff members in Baldenville that are nationally board certified, some who's doing that.
Yeah.
Thank you, David. So just a quick reminder, we have the RMS community survey that's been released. It's been, we're going to be advertising, hanging up posters. Sarah had said that she's going to try to get out and get around town and post them. We also have them on our social media as well as our website. So it's imperative, so if you could help spread the word, that we get this data from our community so we can continue to move forward. And yeah, Joe, did we, did you have a chance to talk with Danielle about the student survey?
So she's in the process of taking the RMS survey and manipulating it for the Strategic Planning Committee to review for students. So our intent is to have the Strategic Planning Committee review a survey that will go to students through our system. It's a little bit easier that way. It'll be more tailored to their needs and their wants as opposed to what was presented for the...
Thanks, Joe and Danielle.
When does the community survey close? Do you remember?
They're going to monitor that for the rates, how many responses they're getting. At a minimum, it will not end until the last open house that's offered, which I believe is the end of September, beginning of October. Because the intent was for it to be also available for families during the open house or curriculum nights, however you want to refer to them in each of the buildings.
We sent out a friendly reminder to the principals today to make sure that they have everything all ready to go. So that's just a quick friendly reminder. And as far as the next strategic planning meeting is concerned, we want to have time to gather this data. So it'll be forthcoming.
And this is a link on our website. So how is that monitoring control that just people from Beville are doing that survey?
So they're monitoring it from their end, RMS. There's some mechanisms in place to do that analysis. And it does ask, you know, specific, one of the introductory questions relates to that. You know, there's a series of questions about getting into the survey. It'll stop people if, depending on how they're responding to the survey.
And also I forgot to add, Joe, that there's an opportunity to win a $75 gift card. And there's multiple cards. There'll be multiple winners as an incentive. So I hope the folks at home that were chomping on the survey right now.
And there's just another like data analysis piece that plays into it too. They have other things that are running in the background that ultimately make sure that like somebody can't just go to the link and then select, you know, 55555 is a response or 444 or whatever it is. There's a mechanism in place to alert them to that data. And part of it, when they're responding to the questions, if they get a response like that, it asks another question. So they're the experts in this field. They're the ones that are indicating, you know, that it will produce reliable results for us. And they have experience nationally, making sure that that's the case.
Yeah, I know that the last time around, that information survey, the community survey really was kind of integral to the strategic plan on the last interval in terms of what does the community want? The educated person, like, so, yeah, it's, it's good that it's up there.
So the links in the survey are obviously going online and being advertised for our website. Is it being advertised in any other manner other than online, like newspaper? I mean, how are community members who don't have or may not be in the thick of things right now in the school district be able to know about it or access it?
Joe, correct me if I'm wrong. Wasn't Sarah going to reach out to put it in the paper or has it, or was it in the, was it our newsletter? Yeah.
Right, but if, I'm talking about parent or individuals who...
RMS was working, RMS was working, they have, they have systems as well to make sure that it gets sent to community members within their system. But we also have the, they drafted communication information with Sarah. I believe it's going to go in the messenger is the local paper.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I can follow up on that to ensure that as well. The next item is our public hearing for the 2023-24 budget and discussion of meeting the Board of Education candidates. Do we want to change, the question that we're, that we're talking about, do we want to change the format from what we currently have to more of a Q and A? Where there's four or five questions that each member, or excuse me, each candidate is, would be asked. And if that's the case, I don't want to, as far as full disclosure is concerned, if we do that format, we would need to require to change that to a different evening because of the time constraint. And if we're going to do it properly. But currently, right now, on the calendar, it's all in one evening. So if we change that format, we'll have to make that notification to the community that it's not, it's in the calendar as on one, on the same night, on the printed calendar.
It was put out as a DVD or it was actually on the calendar?
No, it's actually on the calendar.
But the last meeting, didn't we table it to come back around to discuss?
Correct.
Whether we're going to separate it and also now you've included or added a different format to candidate, that would meet the candidate.
And that would require to do a different evening?
And it would also require...
I'm not saying it would require, but just in anticipation of the length, the amount of time that it may take.
But even though if it is decided upon a different format, we can still also decide if it doesn't go to that format to make it a separate evening as well, separate from the public hearing and because it's a public hearing, meet the candidates, and then a full board meeting, correct? I'm putting it out there. I...
So having said that, that's not, it's not, it wouldn't be a big shift to make that notification if we decide to, if the board decides that's where we would like to go. So I'll open that up for discussion.
I'm in favor of, a proponent of separating the two, making it two different meetings regardless whether the format of meet the candidate nights has changed or not. I think that it's just an awful lot with the public hearings, the meet the candidates, and then a full board meeting after that. That's just my personal opinion. I do like the suggestion or the idea of changing the style of meet the candidate night a little bit more so than what it's typically done in the past where, you know, we've all gotten up and set our three or five minutes, whatever it is. But I think we get that in the bios that we present and help so that the community and parents and voters, eligible voters are able to hear a little bit more in-depth of how we, how potential candidates see things, their, you know, why they're engaging in the opportunity. So I'm in favor of both changing the format and making it two separate ones.
Just a clarifying question regarding the different format. In terms of a Q and A, it was mentioned, would there be a moderator to ask the same question? Would it be open to the public, which is another option? So I just wanted to put it out there, what that potentially could look like. I wonder if a moderator could be...
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that was, that if we change that, if we change the format, that would be my recommendation. So there's a complete separation from the board and then it's a third-party entity moderator running it, if you will. And so it's an open, it's open to the public. It's a public meeting. So...
Probably worth bringing up here because we did have a brief discussion on it, agenda planning. Just kind of fill people in. We talked about, you know, the option of, I think it was Kim that in the past has used what the legal women voters or, you know, some outside group that facilitated it that weren't, you know, associated with the district. So we did talk about that. And, you know, a Q and A of going around to all candidates and having them answer the same questions. Not necessarily having the questions beforehand of, you know, or maybe, I don't know that, I don't know what Kim's experience was with that. But I'm certainly in favor of, you know, the new format. I think it would give at least the public a much better idea of, you know, who's running, why they're running, their motivations, those kinds of things, their preparedness than we've done in the past. Because as Shelley's kind of pointed out, you know, it's pointing, you know, just reading their bios is, you know, typically what has been in the past. And I don't know that that gives voters, you know, enough information of who to vote for because you probably came in there already knowing who you're going to vote for if you're just hearing them read their bio. So I'm in full favor of it. I think a different day would be great too. Because this thing would probably, if we're going to change a format like that, it's probably going to go longer than our typical half hour, especially with the number of candidates we've had for the last several years. So it's definitely increased because of interest. So anyway, that's my two cents.
I also think it'd be a great service to the community to get a little more information about the people that are asking to represent and be their voice at the table for sure. I agree with everything that's been said so far about just the bios. I mean, people can read that on their own. It's just like, you know, things are going to change from year to year. Some issues are going to be more important than others. And, you know, people from the community will have questions, you know, different stakeholder groups will have questions, different types of questions, you know, what's important to, you know, us as parents is probably different than what's important to my two kids at home, you know, they may have questions as well. And encourage them to come or do a different session for the students. I don't know. But they should definitely know who they're voting for in more than a bio.
My understanding from the sounds of things, it isn't the audience asking questions. There's some predetermined questions that are asked by a moderator. So I'm not sure what you're getting at in terms of...
Oh, they could submit questions possibly? So none of us are coming up with the questions. You know, they will be submitted by, the people will be voting for us.
I don't see a lot of necessarily value in a televised debate for a school board election. I think that's what it's going to turn into. That's absolutely what it's going to turn into.
Not a debate. Jason, you did this at your previous school district. Can you explain the format so that we're on the same page?
There are a number of, number of different formats. And in my previous experience, we had community members come in and write a question down on a card and put it into a basket. And then I had, I went through to make sure that there weren't any inappropriate questions, that they were relevant questions. And certainly not in this, in this particular case, we would have that separate outside entity. What I would suggest is have that separate outside entity filter those through, if that's with the direction that we choose to go.
But to your point, Matt, you know, the concern about it becoming politicized and becoming a platform that could turn negative, that's valid and should be considered.
I understand what everybody's saying, but I think we're just trying to figure out if we want to go that route and then we decide what the format would be if it's an outside entity being the moderator, mediator, excuse me, and then just a certain set of questions. But also to Jen's point about students, you know, getting a student's input because we do have a lot of students. We do have a lot of students who come down to vote. And I think any potential board member should have the opportunity to hear what the kids are questioning or thinking and how potential members may respond to those. But obviously it needs to be in a constructive manner where it doesn't become a debate. And I don't, I don't, I wouldn't foresee that, but that's just my opinion on it. But I think it needs to be done collectively and professionally and just listen to other suggestions on how the format can be run. But I think it needs to be done collectively and professionally and just listen to other suggestions on how the format can be run.
Right, I think, you know, definitely ground rules and, you know, everyone gets like their minute or whatever, two minutes to answer the question. Just go right down the line and then the next question, the second person starts and the third question, you know, so not the same person starting all the time and there is no back and forth, there is no debate. You just have those ground rules.
Kind of seems like what I typically see on the political debates, you go down the line, people, the question gets asked, it goes here and there and then, oh, but, and then, and then they're rebutting things that they heard before, it's, I mean, that's what you're opening up. That is what you're opening up and then you're going to have hooting and howling out in the, in the audience.
Is there any like legal pieces, just wondering that that should be checked with as far as like, regulations that we have to follow, if I'm not sure of, this is before, I mean, I'm not saying one way or the other, but just to check it over, just to make sure that there's nothing to, you know, the process or anything.
I don't think that would be a bad idea, only because I know with some of the other topics that we had as a result of the election this previous year, the legal advice was to kind of hold tight because there are some changes that are coming in regards to the election process. I don't know what that entails.
I'm just going to speak on my past experience last year. I felt that the way that it has been done in the previous years where we are able to come in and speak about what we want to speak about and what we want to get across to the voters is a pretty open and fair forum. That being said, most of the candidates spoke to the messenger, some of them had websites. Some of them, I, I had numerous people call me. I had the opportunity to get across what I wanted to get across. I think that opening this up in an open forum is going to give, I don't know how to say this, I, I just don't, I, I don't like the idea of it. I think that with the numerous news outlets and social media, I think that the school board and the school district getting involved in the school election isn't the way to go. I think if we want to host a public hearing, that's great. If we want to host a meet the candidate, that's great. But I think we need to leave it up to the candidates of what they want to get across to the voters so that they can choose who they want to vote for.
Look at it from another perspective. Being on the Board of Education isn't about me, it's about representing the people in the community. So it's easy for people to just say and share what my views are, but it's not just my views at the end of the day. And learning about what's important to the people in our community and then having an opportunity to see where the different people who want the privilege of sitting up here stand on issues that are important to them is important. And I agree, Sam, about school districts being involved with meet the candidates night, because when this was first proposed years ago, it was before I was even, they came out running for the board, it was going to be put on by someone outside of the school district. And we need to understand that anybody in the community can say, you know what? We'd like to have the candidates come and speak to our organization and be as candid, can choose to show up or not show up. It just so happens that the school district took control over what started from the district PTA meeting. And they did go down that road of having an outside monitor, moderator all set up for the event. So this isn't something unique to Baldensville. It's a format that other school districts have done and maybe we should look to see how they do and how they handle some of the concerns that were brought up to this table before we say, no, that's not the format we want. Because really it's about a service to the community, not to myself or anyone else who's running.
I guess the point I would make is what's, what would stop a candidate from doing that now? So if you're a candidate, which presumably you have been before, I have been before, there is nothing stopping me as a candidate from reaching out to the constituents of the community and saying, hey, if you have questions for me as a candidate, please come and ask me, please come and talk to me, call me, here's my number. I'll be here for an open, you know, coffee chat, whatever it is. So there, so I, I guess to the point of Matt, Sam and possibly Tanya as well, that this could become very politicized and the news shows up, there is nothing stopping a candidate at this point from getting the information that you say you're seeking from these, these meetings. So you, you can do that, that's part of the process, that's part of the campaign process, if you so choose.
I just want to add another thought to that. I think having one central time, location and convenience for our community to be able to come and whatever the format, format may be, if we chose to go whatever route we do, it's just a central location and everybody has the opportunity to answer the same question. And, and I'm assuming if the format, we don't want debate back and forth, that can be nicked in the bud by the, by the moderator, mediator, excuse me. Whether it's a school board election or a political election, there's always people going in other avenues to advocate for other, for candidates. I just see it as one location where we can come to, people can come together in our community to hear everybody's. Not just if you're affiliated with a certain group, and I don't want to get political into it, but I, I'm in favor, favor of, but that's my personal opinion, I know it has to be a vote amongst all of us. So I just hope you really give it some, some time to think or thought process and having everybody add in tonight what they, they have is great to hear as well.
I, I think that if you want to, you know, put questions out there, invite the messenger to, you know, gather some questions that they want answered, allow candidates to answer them, they can publish it, everybody can see it when they want to. As opposed to one night when it's going to become free pro.
I think we could possibly look at what, I don't know, I guess I was asked, why, why do you want to run and what do you want to accomplish? Maybe what are your goals and what do you hope to, maybe change the question that's going to be answered. But let the candidates speak for themselves. And not, I, I don't know, I guess I'm not in favor, I, I'm not in favor of having a Q and A. And I just think that there's enough other avenues for people to get their voice out if, if they're, if they want, if they want to. I agree with Tony.
I think it could also be a compromise and maybe, you know, give a little bit more guidance to the candidates and say, okay, take two minutes to tell you, you know, about yourself, because as much as a lot of people are just elaborating on the 100 word blurb they have in the thing, in the messenger or whatever, and then have one question that everybody answers and you got five minutes and then that's it. So you have the one question, however we come up with that question, you have a couple of minutes to talk about yourself and what your goals will be. And there's no debate, there's no going back and forth, everyone answers the same question. Same one or two questions or however we would want to phrase it.
This is, this is Jeff. You know, some great, great points, some of which I didn't think of, but I think it all comes down to how we set this up. I'm, I'm still in favor of having something and, you know, I don't see the difference between what was being proposed here and what Wayne just said. It can, you know, it can, I think that was the intent, was that there would be some questions that, okay, what do you think of this? What do you think of that? And each candidate could then be given a chance to answer that. I mean, I would contend if, you know, to some of the, to some of those opposing this, any forum of a, of a can't beat the candidate night has the potential to do that. I mean, they could very easily do that with our current format if someone chooses to go down that path. So I don't think this is, you know, creating a new forum for somebody to get political because we already provided that to them for the last, at least 11, 12 years since I've been on the board, if they chose to do that. So I think it really comes down to, if we're going to do this, we need to figure out what is the right format so that, you know, I think the, the goal is to give the public a chance to hear from the candidates that don't have, you know, or know about all the other avenues that candidates have, like social media and going to meetings around, you know. This was one central occasion where all board candidates came to and that, that's always been its kind of goal. But, you know, if we choose not to do some kind of Q and A thing, I would then question, do we even need to promote a candidate night? Because again, we're, we're giving everyone a forum to potentially go political if they want. And if that's the concern, then I don't see even the current format from preventing that. But so I, I'm in favor of finding a way for the public to hear from the candidates. This was one way to go about it, but I guess we can figure that out. But I still think the goal is, how do we get the candidates to get their word out? If, if that's even our goal, maybe that's not our goal from what I'm hearing, but because they have their own way to do it.
No, thank you, Jeff, just a question to superintend Thompson. Is the meet the candidate night obligation a requirement? So, so once again, the district is providing an avenue, right? Because this is, when we're, when we're running for the board, you're, it's a democratic process where you have to, you've taken upon yourself to run for the privilege of serving your community, to do that work. The district is providing one pathway. So the question is, you know, we're providing that already. Is that sufficient for the board or do you feel that it needs to be expanded? I don't know that answer, I don't think I have an answer right now. I think listening to the feedback, we provide an opportunity. There are other avenues, part of the process, this democratic process is to learn and understand, to get the word out to the public about who you are as a representative of the community, at the school community. And, and, and there is, there's things that you do, that's something you have to learn and go out and reach out to others to learn to do that. As I had, reaching out people who taught me things I needed to do to help me understand what this process was all about. So I, I just, I just want to, want people to be mindful of that, that this is not a requirement or obligation of this district, they're doing that as a courtesy to this community, so they had an additional pathway to learn about any candidate, about what, how they can contribute to the greater school community and, and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
I think it may be worthwhile to reach out to different school districts, use the research online, talk to different board members at some of the networking opportunities we're going to have to see different formats and how they navigate some of the challenges that were brought up tonight. I definitely don't think that we should make a decision right now without doing some more research and see how it's handled. You know, this is, you know, I understand what Tanya is saying, that, you know, the district provides that, but is that enough? I, I go back to the first time there was meet the candidates night and people were expecting a completely different format and this was what was unraveled that first time. Now it just seems like less people from the community come unless they're supporters of the people like running, like family members. However, this past year is more than just family members. Is it enough, are we doing enough for our community to know that they know who they're voting for? Like I feel like when I sit up.
Why is that our obligation to control? Why is that our obligation?
Actually, no, it's not, I mean, anybody, anybody.
That's what you're advocating for.
Anybody in the community can say, hey, I would like to have a debate, any organization can, and we could all be invited. It just so happens that this is a school district and candidates can choose to come or not and field questions. So I say we reach out and see how other school districts do it. Is just, you know, rattling out what we've done, you know, career wise, is that really sufficient? Does the community want more? Do they want to know where we stand on particular issues, answer questions, how we handle ourselves under certain circumstances? What's hot from year to year changes? That's important to the different stakeholders in the community. I think we could provide more and it's great for everyone to come together and bring the community together in a positive way. I don't look at it as a negative.
I, well, I just look at it as your vision of what the election should be.
I think you bring a good point up. You bring up a good point, you know, what is the responsibility of a community member? A Baldensville citizen, antecypically engaged in this process? Is it the district's responsibility to provide all those opportunities? Or do we as individuals have, need to do our research, need to demonstrate, right? What the, you know, what it means to be civically engaged, doing your research, reaching out, asking questions, connecting with people? I think about that, not to say, once again, I'm undecided, you know, to expand it. If, if that's what the district feels they should do, I'm, I'm open to, to explore that. But I don't necessarily think it's our obligation. You know, the district is responsible for the, you know, the education of, you know, of students, not to, not to provide opportunities. You know, there's other pathways to do that, so.
So are you proposing that there be no meet the candidates night?
No, I'm not saying that at all. It's just we're not required to do it.
No, of course not.
So changing the format necessarily, if we do that, we just need to explore what that should look like if we choose to do that. And if not, if we keep the same format, we're still meeting an obligation to the community. They're still going to have an opportunity to, to get to know the candidates. That's, that's just where I'm at right now.
I think sometimes it's hard for us, not us, but to look at the community and figure out what they want. But if they want to be involved in the process, they will be, they will be here and they will be involved and they will seek out the information that they want. We can't control how we, how, how it's given to them. There's, I mean, I, I can't tell you the number of people that said to me, oh, I've never voted in a school board election before. For some reason, I decided to this year or whatever. But I, I just don't think that it's our responsibility to make the community come out and decide what they want to do. Maybe I'm not wording that correctly, but we give, like Tanya said, we, we give them a forum. We, we speak to them, we answer questions that we feel is important to the community at that time.
I guess as you and I just differ because it's not about me, I'm curious as to what's important to them? An opportunity to ask, answer questions that they submit that.
They can though, they can ask us questions anytime they want. They can ask any of us questions anytime they want to.
Some people don't know how to reach out and this is an easy forum to do that. I mean, what's the difference of everyone coming together and providing the service? I mean, it's still the service and to Jeff's point, anybody can make comments in their three minutes about the three people that spoke prior to them. I, it's actually a perspective that I never thought of and Jeff's right, it's just people haven't gone down that road. And I hope people in this community would be adults and take the high road because if someone didn't end up to be, that they'd be asked right off my list to vote for. You have to remember that everyone's in a position, how are they going to handle themselves and model to the community and the people in the district of how to behave.
I just want to comment on a couple of things. Matt, when you had said, I'm going to respectfully agree to disagree with your comment to that. We're trying to make the election process something personal or how we want to see it, view it as. But the other thing is, it's, I keep on hearing debate. We're all adults and professional and looking at using an outside mediator, not, not a moderator, excuse me. It's not a debate. And maybe Sam, going back to you, it's, it's something that we can give to the community if they come to one location. We've all experienced our audience here at, you know, at board meetings. But if we give them an opportunity to maybe have a voice, you know, it's all about our, our students having a voice, being engaged. So I, I think what I'm hearing is that people are open, one, going back to the original question, is to separate the two nights between the meet the candidate night and the public hearing and then the board meeting, have it two separate nights. I think we still need to go back to Jason and respond to that. And then going back to other people's comments, if, if, if it's something we do still want to pursue, reach out to other districts, reach out to board colleagues that are meeting at different conventions. It's a great opportunity with the convention coming up at the end of October, you know, just chit chat, what do you do with your district? at the end of October, you know, just chit chat, what do you do with your district with, you know, elections and how you how you get the candidate information out. I think everybody has great, I think everybody has said things to think about, but I just hope that we don't make that decision tonight. Because I think we have to do our due diligence and do a little background or research because we want to be able to be the best it can be, which also means you want to have the best candidates.
I agree and disagree. I think like Tanya, I'm probably undecided. I mean, I I see some benefits, but I also see some issues arising. Who asks the questions? Who chooses the questions? You know, maybe we have a meet the candidate reception. That's something to consider as opposed to a forum where questions are asked where the public, you know, to Jen's point, it gives people the opportunity to have it in one place, to your point. I don't I don't know the answer, but I like, you know, I I think it's a good discussion. I I would like to know Mr. Ashcraft's position, if if he would feel comfortable putting that out there and not be put on the spot like this.
So, yeah, I guess thank you for the opportunity. It's kind of, I'm not going to say annoying, but difficult to sit here and listen to what seems to be turning into an argument about something that seems so relatively simple. Obviously, I'm not an elected official, but I guess I see both sides of this. I'm a relatively political person, so without getting political in any fashion, I definitely have seen within recent years that politics have become kind of ridiculous. You mentioned debates. I think political debates lately are ridiculous. Last year's board election almost became borderline like that because there was just a lot of politics playing into school districts lately. At the end of the day, not to be the seventeen year old talking to all of you professionals and talking down to you, but I guess at the end of the day, your job your job does revolve around students. So I think it's just it's just important to remember that at the end of the day, again, I don't want to talk down to you, but you are serving students in some fashion. I also know that change is uncomfortable sometimes and this might be a change that is uncomfortable in the beginning, but if it is, what end up being, what ends up being the decision that's made, I can definitely see why. I mean, you mentioned students. I know kids that voted last year. I know kids that will be voting this year. I know that it may be beneficial to some of us that do care to have more of a personal connection with some of the people that are running. I know you all do have your bios, but the bios don't really say much about somebody's person. They say much more about what you've done in your past, about your past careers. So without rambling on, I guess just this doesn't need to be a heated discussion in my opinion. There's definitely like positives to go into it. And somebody did mention to you, like, any forum where people are sitting and communicating, there's an opportunity for there to be arguments. That's just human nature. So I don't know if any of that even made any sense, but yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, actually, it did. Student centered. Fairness is a big thing and one challenge with this that I have thought about, and that's why it'd be very important to decide who's going to moderate it and hope they have an understanding of the different types of candidates, meaning some of us have been here for a very long time and have a lot of history and understand how everything works. Some people are very interested in being here, but they really don't know until they get here what it's going to be like and making sure that the questions that are chosen, as someone who's been on the board for a long time, isn't going to be an advantage to them and a disadvantage to someone who desires to be in these seats.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Thank you. What I was going to say is when I ran and originally heard the Meet the Candidate, I don't know if it was Tony or Tanya that said that, I envisioned it as the candidates would be sitting like this and the community members would be walking around and talking to them. Like, to me, that was a meet the candidate because they would come out to you and say, hey, how are you doing this to meet you? Tell me about yourself. And they would have that opportunity to ask questions and make personal connections. So maybe if we had something like that and then a lot of people, a couple of minutes to talk in front of everybody or something too. I don't know. Like I said, when I first read it, you know, the calendar and whatnot, to me, I was thinking it was going to be like a Career Day kind of thing, like as Ann was talking about where everyone was sitting here and people were walking around, you know, so then they could ask their questions, you know? So if we did that for a half hour and then, you know, another half hour of people getting up and, you know, talking, I don't know, that was just a thought. Oh, I was also going to say, I was going to say, we should, if it's possible, getting the students involved and maybe have them be moderators if that's legal. I don't know. But.
So there was a good discussion with a lot of different viewpoints and things to think about. So why don't we take care of the calendar, at least that portion, and we can talk about the format after we have time to process and maybe reach out to some other school districts who do this format and how they put in some of the controls of the things that concerns tonight. So thinking about, let's talk about the date, whether we're going to keep it the same night or separate it. Sometimes, since I've lived in Balden'sville, there's literally three people running and then last year we had nine. And to give everyone that opportunity, I feel like people are like speed reading, you know, everything that they want to say in that three or five minute, five minutes, I think it's five we've been up to.
Wouldn't that be dependent upon if you changed the format?
I don't know. I'll defer to my board colleagues because we talked about right now, right, the Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for that night. We would have a hearing, a regular meeting. We also don't know what could possibly come up to extend those meetings and do we want to have a Meet the Candidates Night right prior to meeting and to Wayne's suggestion, you know, going up individually to people afterwards and asking those questions. So, you know, what's going to make it worth it for our community to come out? Are they going to come out to get the information that they need?
Just just to mention, I'm thinking that we probably will not need a Facilities Committee meeting that night because the Facilities Committee is meeting more frequently on the front end if we're going to go out with another project vote. So probably by May, that meeting can at least come off that night, just so everybody's hearing the same thing.
I would suggest too, there's, I'd suggest too, that, I mean, there's been a lot of viewpoints brought out tonight. I don't see any reason to make any decisions tonight. Give everybody some time to ponder what they heard tonight. I certainly heard some perspectives I hadn't thought of, but I'm sure everybody is in that same boat. So nobody's penciling in the Meet the Board Candidate Night thing tonight into their calendar for May eighth or whatever date it is. So I think we still have a little opportunity to kind of reflect on today's discussion and maybe bring it back to the October third meeting and maybe finalize things. So I just suggest that we don't commit anything tonight. Lot of good debate, lot of good viewpoints and, you know, let let us sleep on it and see if we can get more information before, between now and October third. Just just my thoughts.
I agree because when we left the last meeting, it was going to be a TBD, but it was discovered that it's actually on the calendar already. So there's no need to decide tonight because it's going to be have to be communicated out if there's a change anyway.
I'm just wondering, Superintendent Thompson, about your timeline. Is there a particular, in terms of, you know, knowing when a final date is needed and then being able to clarify that in terms of timeline, what would be our deadline to give you that information?
I think I think the sooner the better. That way we can we can plan accordingly.
No, as I said at the last meeting, I'll just say again, I know last year, some of the feedback that we got was to get stuff on our website and get it out earlier and and more clarity on the website. So, I mean, I don't think we need it tomorrow, but I do think it's a a discussion that we probably need to kind of weigh one way or the other, you know, in the next month or so, just off the top of my head. I will say, you know, based on the guidance that was shared with the board, just as a reminder, the requirement is to hold the the public hearing for the budget seven to fourteen days before the budget vote. So that means that would be any time between May second and May ninth.
Move on to trip request.
This is a trip request for the marching band to attend the travel to the Bands of America Regional Competition at the University of Delaware on October eighth through the tenth. One thing that I will point out, this does have students doubling up in the bed space, but there is the attached letter that families can submit if they are uncomfortable with that scenario. So this will be on the agenda for approval at our next meeting on October third. Questions?
So Joe, real quick question, just to clarify, this came up at a dinner planning. So the letter attached that says, you know, if a parent's not comfortable with it, I think I think you made the point, if a parent's not comfortable with that arrangement, then it would be on the booster club to add rooms or accommodate that concern.
Correct.
Just elaborate on that a little bit.
It's on the the group that's fundraising and ultimately the district owns that responsibility once the board approves the trip. But all the fundraising for this trip is done through the booster and then there's some student ECA, excuse me, ECA account as opposed to booster because the the band doesn't have a parent booster. So it's being paid through ECA and it would be split for the entire group, not necessarily for an individual person. The band staff knows that they cannot require a specific family who chooses that option to have to pay the difference. That wouldn't be appropriate.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. And then that standard will apply for any group that applies for any kind of trip like this, correct?
Correct, yep. We're still asking folks to maintain one student per per bed for all of the other groups, but certainly recognize that situations come up and due to fundraising costs, et cetera, especially with prices now, that it may be unattainable. So therefore, that is an option for all groups.
And the, just for background, the one person per bed is driven by a specific school district policy?
Yep. Regulation related to board policy through conversation with the policy committee. That is the preferred preference. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. Item A. Result of the Boys and Girls Cross Country Teams Travel to Participate in the Manhattan College Cross Country Invitational at Courtland Park, New York City, New York, October seventh through two thousand, October seventh through eighth, two thousand twenty-two pursuant to the attached, can I motion please? Tony first. Shelley second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item B. Result of the Girls Basketball Team Travel to Participate in a KFA event in Kissimmee, Florida, December twenty-sixth through thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two pursuant to the attached, can I motion please?
Move.
Shelley first. Wayne second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item C. Result of the Board of Education approved the contract agreement between the Balden'sville Central School District and the Village of Balden'sville for Special Patrol Officer Services from July first, two thousand twenty-two to June thirty, two thousand twenty-three pursuant to the attached, can I motion please? Tony first.
Second, Matt.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item D. Result of the Board of Education approved the contract agreement between the Balden'sville Central School District and the Arundel County Sheriff's Department for School Resource Officer and Special Patrol Resource Officer Services from July first, two thousand twenty-two to June thirty, two thousand twenty-three pursuant to the attached, can I motion please? Tony first. Second, Wayne. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item E. Result of the Board of Education approved the disposal of surplus equipment and instructional materials for students attached, can I motion please?
Will.
Shelley first.
Second, Matt.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. We've moved to board roundtable portion of the agenda. And we do have one item officially listed there and I sent an email with some other things that we needed to tie up. The NISBA proposed bylaw amendment and resolutions. We're going to be going over that at the next meeting. Those just came out, so we give people plenty of time to review those. However, if anyone has any issues with those, we can submit something by Friday. However, we can still bring up those issues on the floor. It just wouldn't be in the guide prior to the meeting. So there's thirty-two proposed resolutions that are being recommended by the NISBA Resolution Committee. There's eleven that have been proposed that are not being recommended by the committee. That doesn't mean that they won't be passed, they would just be debated or brought for, they'll be brought to the floor, but it doesn't mean that they won't go through. They would be had to be brought forward on the floor at the meeting. They can be brought up at the other business portion of the meeting, those that were not For Wayne, we will discuss the team, like how we would prefer you, would like you to vote. However, there may be certain times where there'll be such a debate on the floor or amendments made at the meeting that you'll have to, you know, do the best you can to represent where you think the board stands on the resolutions. Love that, Matt.
Run with it on the fly.
So does anyone have any questions? Joe, did I cover everything with that or am I forgetting something?
No, I was just going to recommend too, that as far as the process for the next meeting, so NISBA has a position, right? Whether they're in favor of it. So if you approach the discussion at the next meeting, assuming that you're in favor and then maybe bring those items up that you're not in favor, that'll help move it along so we're not spending three hours going through step by step. So that should help at least make it more fluid next meeting.
Agreed. So the ones that we're going to take the same position, so when you look at it, they're all the same, like each resolution will have the school that submitted, the date it's submitted, what the resolution is, the NISBA Resolution Committee, what their, or actually, I'm sorry, the school proposal, what the rationale for it is, and then there will be an explanation by the Resolution Committee underneath that as well to give you some more insight in where people, where each groups are on this resolution. And then we'll discuss the ones that we're not in agreement with. Next thing quickly, back in March of two thousand twenty-one, the board did a staff survey. Mark Dang, we had, Mark Dang came in, we reviewed the results of that and we want to see over period time, we want to go back and re-survey, see where they are. We've kind of put this off up to this point, but Mark did reach out to me again, so I wanted to bring it to the board. Is this something we want to do? We didn't last year, because we had Superintendent Thompson was new, we didn't have any real changes. We need to get a lot of systems in place. So I guess what I'm asking right now, how would you like me to respond? Is this something we want to entertain again or do we really, we have a strategic plan coming up? These surveys are going out to the community. Do we want to spend the money on that right now? And would we get anything back that's really, anything that we can't see happening over the last year anyway?
How long did that that whole process take the last time around? I can't remember.
See, I believe the surveys went out in like around March of two thousand twenty-one and we got the report, we met with Mark probably around May-ish here.
So a couple of months?
No, we, there'll be a year because this was May of two thousand twenty-two.
A year and a couple of months.
Or, yeah. Usually they like to do it a year, but is it something that we want to do if they're like there's a need to do right now?
Yeah, I was just thinking about it in connection with the Strategic Planning Committee and whether there would be anything worthwhile and timely for that, but it doesn't sound like it would be. So you'd be getting results right after we just started a three, whatever year, strategic, three, seven year, I forget what, strategic plan. So I'm not sure that that it would add a significant- So I'm not sure that, that it would add a significant amount of value for something that would be kind of institutionalized.
And I know, this is Jeff, I know Superintendent Thompson had some ideas or shared some thoughts on it during Agenda Planning, I don't know if you want to share those now.
Thank you, Jeff. I, I think that we're going to end up suffering from survey exhaustion. So I, I agree that it's not necessary, we can hold for now.
I agree with that as well. That was my thought that I shared. I just, of course, feel obligated to bring everything forward to you and seeing where the team is. I know there's some people on the board who did not even know that that took place or probably what we're talking about right now, so I apologize.
Yeah, I, I, just even before that, I don't think it's going to bear any further than what it's going to consist of, so I don't think it's money that's.
I, I agree, but now to say that we don't revisit it at a later date. To everyone else's point, yes.
I agree, because one of the things that Mark did say was, you know, making sure that the staff sees some of the things that we've done, we've talked about those, probably some of the biggest things, like in policy, reaching out to different groups that can give us input on particular policies. That was one thing that they wanted to be heard and involved with. So we were trying to still work on some of those things, because we haven't touched upon everything that came out of that. I think it'd be worthwhile to give ourselves an opportunity to try and do some of the things that, the learnings that we found from that. So if everyone's okay, I'll send Mark an email tomorrow, let him know that we're going to not, not do it, but we're going to hold off for a while because we have all these other surveys going out. Okay, thank you. Another quick one. Jeff, you can help me with this because we had a discussion with this. The team, we do have a team retreat scheduled for November. We did talk about, we have a very new board, we have six out of nine of us who are new and Jeff and I were discussing quickly something that we did with David Freud, who is with MACHN, the leadership position, doing a communications leadership style type survey. I don't know if that's something we want to consider. I can speak personally when I got out of it, but there's other options we could do for our team retreat, but we do need to start thinking about that because we'll need to schedule someone, make sure they're available and the date that we have currently set aside for that. I still have my report, he's strange in the Maxwell method and the disc personality tree. For me personally, I can just say with this, it's very difficult to work with people when you don't necessarily understand yourself. So I learned a lot about myself and understood why I asked the types of questions that I did or how I processed information. I learned some colleagues why they would get impatient with me because I was, you know, very data-driven. Some people don't process information like that. Some people like very short, quick responses and all that, some personalities. When you answer the questions, it's amazing because you're answering questions just picking words in the survey and it was truly amazing how they can come to this report based on those types of answers to those questions. But that's just one thing. We've also had Derek Dorsey with us earlier and we've also talked to the NISBA representative that they do some training as well, some custom retreats. So just some things to think about. I don't think we necessarily have to decide tonight, but we probably need to have a pretty good direction by the next meeting. What do you think for scheduling? I did send an email to David Freud, which I copied Jeff on and we did get a response. I'm not sure Jeff saw it, I saw it before I came. He's kind of asking what we're looking for and I don't know if anything I described is something that we would be interested in to share with him or see if he has additional ideas if we choose to go with him.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I've had the opportunity to recover, cover the Telling Your Story, Communication Guide for Board, for Boards. And since Jen brought up the topic with, after what did she say? David Freud. Communication and learning about how to properly communicate as a board and then just hearing Jen's description of possibly going that, that way, I would think it'd be very beneficial so that it's all, it's become very effective and I think would help us as a board to get information across to committee with one another. So I'm definitely in favor of that, but I don't know if everyone's had an opportunity to take advantage of what's distributed.
Another thing that identifies people's strengths and weaknesses and learning how we can utilize each other's strengths and build each other's challenges or weaknesses up. I know we don't like the word weakness, I'm looking at Tommy, I'm like, what's the correct word I should be using right now? Just to kind of build the team, you know, and how we work together, maybe particular things that particular board members have strengths and would focus on. It, it was very interesting, if anyone, I, I am not embarrassed to share this, if anyone ever wants to take a peek at it, I already shared it with Jason. You're more than welcome to see what would, the product that would come from that if you would like to before we discuss this again.
I think we should tackle their rope course.
A lot of trust. Absolutely.
It'll be interesting if we keep the date in November. I don't know how late you can do the ropes course.
Makes it more challenging. We've got to work together.
Bigger bond. I would just say, first of all, my most important thing would be to find a date that works for all nine of us. These are great, but you know, I don't think it's quite the same if, you know, we're not all able, if we pick a date that we're not all able to participate. So I think we can first just find a date just to get everybody in the same room at the same time when we agree.
Good thing about this, Jeff, is the date is already on our board calendar, so now it's just a matter of hoping that who we choose to have can work with us on that date that's already out there.
Well, I, I understand that, but making sure that even though we had dates on there, kind of making sure people are still committed to being available that day and if not, finding another day, so.
I, I agree, Jeff. I, I think the commitment, if the board collectively, the goal is to get the board to collectively become this unified cohesive group, we have to be there and I totally agree.
So if we can maybe get a poll from everybody, are they committed to that date? If not, do we have to go with a Saturday or do we have to go with a different date or just whatever? I'm advocating for any of that, but just saying that if people aren't available. Do the best we can to get everybody in the room.
We already have a, we already have a date, right? That's when I was just looking, the fourteenth, is that right?
Yes, it's been on the calendar.
Whatever the date is, making sure everybody positively commits to that date because that date was picked.
Right, a while ago.
Several of the board members were board members, so, so just making sure.
Right, no, I think that's, that's the right way to go as well. I just want to make sure I wasn't overseeing something or we're trying to come up with it, with an actual date.
And that's fourteen, November, correct?
Yes. So are we leaving?
Since, I guess since, you know, some of us have put that, that date in our calendar when the schedule came out, I guess we can send out a doodle to ensure everyone's still available on that date before we proceed or no?
I think it's worth the verification.
So why don't we, to make it easier for us for scheduling, because we don't know exactly who we're going to go with yet, let's just make sure everyone's at least available on that date so we have a sure date that we can give to whoever we choose to work with. So can we just, I guess, have someone send down a doodle to ensure that everyone's still available on that date? And then I will respond to David Freud's email at least. And then, and I don't want to, I, I had experience with his training, but I'm only one person out of nine and Derek Dorsey did a great job. It's just like a whole nother perspective and actually listening to Barry talking about the custom board retreats was great as well. I don't know, my first year on the board, Jeff, you coordinated one with NISBA and I can call you and see what your experience was and how much input you guys were able to give to custom that retreat for the team then.
I actually like Wayne's idea.
The ropes course. And also we may have connections to some administrators that can help us with that. All right, we'll start with that and then I'll communicate with you guys so we can get something scheduled and then report out to the community what we decided because we're not going to have a meeting for a few weeks now. Okay. Just be looking for the polls, actually. I'm not going to go through those because they're an email. Okay, last thing we have is LinkedIn with Super Eval. We need to figure out, based on, I shared the evaluation with the newest board members as per Matt's request, on how we felt we fared in the different measurements from last year of the board self-evaluation. And I've thrown out in emails, you know, some goals that we can't consider when looking at that. However, I'm again, one person out of nine and other people may look at that information and see it differently or have pulled out or noticed things that I didn't notice that we can work on as goals. So these, I got a great question today from Sam, thank you, because it kind of helped me line things up. There's all different kinds of goals, they can be confusing. We have our strategic planning goals, those are overarching goals, then we have our annual goals, which are district goals, board that we set at the end of each year for the next year that are aligned with that. And then Superintendent Thompson has some goals that are part of his evaluation. This is the first time we've actually looked at board goals in a sense of our internal, our operating goals and are we being effective with each other? Are we being effective with our stakeholder groups and where can we get better? We're always moving forward and striving for greater heights, so how can we as a team do that? So I guess I'll open the floor to see if anyone has some ideas based on the board self-evaluation results and some ideas have been thrown out there at previous meetings.
I can start with one and actually Jen, you've already listed and it's something that Derek Dorsey had started with us and then the evening just, it was, the time had run, was the attendance. Because I think it's a bit, people may think that it's not that big of a deal, but if we're not always, all of us are in attendance all the time, then we don't have the full discussion with the board or we're tabling things because some individuals may not be here. But having said that, I, I don't, I don't know where we go with that as far as what is the attendance policy, you know? This is a volunteer position, but we do know that we have to be here to be able to do the best job we can. I don't know what anybody else may feel on that.
I, I, these are elected positions. If there's a problem with somebody being here or not being here, the public has the ability and the duty and responsibility to make that. They don't really believe there needs to be an attendance policy or that there should be an attendance policy because that is for the public to decide if they think somebody's doing a poor job or a good job. And that's just my opinion.
There is a legal attendance thing, right? And I think it's, you can't miss two board, two regular board meetings in a row or something like that.
I think it's three.
I believe it's three.
It's three.
Okay.
Consecutive board meetings in a row, yeah.
Yeah. I knew there was something out there, but we never had to utilize it, but I know it's out there. But that's just a technicality of the law, different than what was just brought up.
And Tony, I understand what you're saying, I'm not criticizing her. I think things happen, but I just think everyone's here and it feels like we don't meet all that often as an entire board in a public, you know, public setting. I don't know if we set certain guidelines, I just think they're a great foundation to have, be able to work productively and move forward with everything. But that's just my.
Does anyone remember?
That's the public's responsibility.
So at the board retreat that we had with their, we started getting up, talking about numbers, like what is acceptable if we choose to have attendance, you know, for committees and regular board meetings? And then we have all these other workshops or things that pop up that we're sending dual polls out for. Does anyone remember what, where we ended up with Derek when we were talking about that? Because that seemed to be a very strong feeling for people that has some type of standard, a goal to strive for.
I think, just to put it into context from the, from the meeting you're talking about, I think there was a goal to have, you know, measurable goals, so there had to be some number tied to it. So when we're talking attendance, we got a brief discussion and.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff, I'm sorry.
I don't remember the number exactly, but you know, it was like, okay, we'll attend ninety, you know, each board member will attend ninety percent of, you know, and I don't remember what the number was that we settled on, but there was some, like.
Committees.
If I remember correctly, we got there, yeah, it was, you would, you would attend some percentage of all the meetings that you were obligated to and that would be a metric that we, that we would measure ourselves against was the discussion for, I know everybody who's there and I'm trying to remember exactly how we got there, but there was something like that and I don't, unfortunately, don't remember the, you know, the number we settled on or thought was a good idea, but I don't think we got there either. I don't think we had something that we were ready to publish, I think it was more of a, you know, academic debate of.
Right, we're tossing it around where we had to stop and Superintendent, Jason emailed us some of the notes on that, so he's checking through email now if he can find that to help us out to where we ended up. Is that, is that something that we want to focus on or do we want to just leave that over here and throw some other ideas out? So the goal is to leave here with some goals to put into Super Eval so we can do our self, our board self-assessment at the end of the year based on the goals we established from ourselves, based on areas of deficiencies that we found from last year.
I think one of the other things we had talked about is like maybe, you know, you would have to do one learning experience or one webinar and then go to an event or something like that too, a school function or was that something or am I making that up?
Yeah.
That was tossed around. Jason just found it, so let me send it to us. There are some other goals.
Are there any goals from last year that you want to continue from that weren't that? And is there a certain amount we should have?
This is the first time where we did the board self-eval in this way where, I mean, just doing a board self-eval, great, and we don't do anything based on what we learned makes it senseless to even do it. So it's just trying to utilize what we decided to do last year, streamlining everyone's goals and kind of, everyone in the district's kind of hold accountable, you know, what can we do to hold ourselves accountable for, you know, improving at what we do for the community.
And I'm just going to raise again, I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that the voters are the people that select the Board of Education members. The voters are the people that determine whether or not they believe a current Board of Education member is doing a good job or not a good job. It's the voter's responsibility and right to do so. So we, we can make goals that you may individually want to have, but it, it is ultimately on the voters and there's no requirements that anybody do anything other than be voted in by the public or voted out by the public for that matter.
So this is for streamlining how we're going to be effective as a team, not as an individual board member and improve upon where some of our deficiencies were. And some of those were based on the survey that were pulled out that I emailed and I'm only one person. Like I said, I've opened up the floor for people to give input that differed from what I learned from the results of our board self-assessment, that we need to improve with communications with stakeholders, people understanding roles and responsibilities. We attend a lot of professional development and effectively sharing that with our team so we can be even better. And what was brought up, I didn't pull this from the survey, but what's brought up in conversations at the professional development for those who were there was that we can't work together if we're not having conversations together because we're not all present as much as possible. if we're not having conversations together, because we're not all present as much as possible. Or we can just choose not to do Super Eval or the board evaluation or have any desires to improve on weaknesses that have been identified.
I don't think that's a fair statement to say we have no desire to improve on identified weaknesses. Each of us has an individual responsibility to be here, to engage in professional development, to engage in team building. So to make that statement is not fair, Jen.
So I guess I'm asking my board colleagues to help me develop goals because I feel like I've put ideas out there and have asked for input based on the review of the document we completed. What would you like me to have, well, it's not Chrissy, but the district staff put into Super Eval so we can have a board self-evaluation, which is recommended by all the different organizations that oversee or assist boards to be the best that they can be?
I guess my first question would be, does the, you know, boards, do they want the formality of using Super Eval to, to track and, and utilize, you know, to monitor our board goals? I mean, I think there's one thing to have board goals, and then does the board support doing it to the formality of using the tool itself? I'd be interested to hear if, you know, people who used it last year found that to be an effective tool. Is that something we want to do, or is it more like to Tony's point, are we, you know, do we? And maybe I'm misinterpreting Tony's point, but basically, you know, we do our job and the voters can decide if we're doing it correctly or not. And if I misrepresented Tony, I apologize, but you know, I think it's, what's the form, what's the level of formality? We want to do our board goals and track them and document them and hold people accountable to them versus, you know, the opposing view.
I'm looking at it as a team, not holding individuals, but working as a team and lifting each other up when we...
And I, I'm not, I'm not debating, I'm just saying, like, if we're gonna, for example, we started with attendance. I mean, the only way to say if we did good attendance is to figure out who attended what. Did every, I mean, at some point, there's some personal accountability there because the scores aren't going to come out right unless I'm thinking of this the wrong way. But I don't know how you measure that without keeping attendance. So how do you, you know, how do you effectively have an attendance goal if that's what we chose without knowing who attended what? So, you know, it's really coming down to, I get it, it's a team thing, but, and I'm just thinking out loud here because I don't know the direction to go, but...
So Super Eval...
I'd like to hear from the board whether, you know, they even are in favor of using a tool to do that. Because we have, last year was our first time. We tried it. What do people think of it? Do they think it was worth the time and was it effective? And I'm not trying to sway anybody either way. I'm just, that was the first time we used that tool to more formally, you know, do a self-evaluation, and do we want to go through that again?
So we, we use a Super Eval platform, but the document, the evaluation tool that was uploaded into it is the same one that we've used since at least I've been on the board. We've just gone through the process of filling it out and doing nothing with it. So I think that's, you know, if we're going to go through the process, what did we learn from it? And what can we do going forward to be more cohesive and effective as a team in meeting the needs of all the different stakeholders?
I, I don't like the Super Eval platform. I think we can have those discussions. I think we have had those discussions, and I think we're currently having that discussion as a board. Again, individuals who are elected by the community. We can have that discussion without a platform, which I personally didn't find helpful. I, I'm not against, and I certainly advocate for team building, professional education, professional development, and personal accountability, as well as working together cohesively to serve the community that we've all taken an oath to serve. I just don't think the Super Eval platform assists in that.
So I don't want to put words in your mouth. So I guess I'm trying to figure out how we as a board improve as a team.
Well, we have, we have board retreats scheduled, correct?
I guess, you know, part of being on a board is modeling all the way down. And we expect goals for our students, we expect goals at the building level, at the district level, our superintendent, and what about us modeling and leading from the top?
We have, we have team retreats, correct? That's, that's where we can build each other as a team in professional development. We have outings that each of us have gone to or continue to go to. And then we come back as a board and we share that with the individuals here. That's how we continue to develop. I don't, is there another program? I don't like the Super Eval program. I don't like that platform.
We can upload anything into Super Eval. It doesn't have to be the New York State School Board Association's evaluation tool. There could be another tool that we put up there. So if you'd like to kind of do some research and help us find one...
I'm asking you, is there, do you not have any way that we work together if we don't use Super Eval? Is that all you're proposing?
So there's a difference between professional development and there's a difference between setting goals.
Yeah, so we can't set goals outside of the Super Eval program?
That's what we're doing now. We're going to upload them in so we can have an evaluation. So what, what measures are we going to have? And how are we going to work towards those between now and the end of the year when we do the evaluation again?
So you're proposing attendance?
I just, I just, I just suggested that. I'm not saying that. I'm sorry, Jen.
I'm not proposing, I mean, I've taken the time to go through all the information. I've shared it multiple times. I've said multiple times that I'm only one person. Attendance, I'm not saying that that's it. You weren't there, but that is the conversation that we had at that meeting.
And I wasn't there because I couldn't be there, and I said that from the very beginning.
Right, no, I know, you were gone.
Well, let's make it clear on record that if you're going to throw that out there on the record, Jen, I'm going to make it clear on the record that when this date was scheduled, I said from the very beginning I couldn't be there, from the very beginning, and it was still selected as the date. So I just wanted to be there.
And we're having the conversation now, because it's been emailed multiple times, twice now, about the different goals and things that we've talked about, or actually more than that because Jason sent it out as well, what was discussed that evening. So all I'm saying is, this isn't something that Jen just came up with. Attendance was something that was brought up, and measures are starting to be discussed that evening.
So are you, are you unhappy that I'm not just going ahead and agreeing with you? Is that what the problem is?
No, actually, no, I don't mind disagreement. I'm trying to define, I'm trying to figure out what you want to do and what you don't want to do because people are interchanging the document itself, the platform itself, the difference between professional development, the difference between goals. How do we model from the top down? We have goals and expectations for everyone else for improvement. They come and present at the beginning of the year, they come and present at the end. How are we going to model and show that? And this is not something that's unique to our board. That's something that is proposed. There's whole discussions about it, whole presentations, I think there's been conventions as well. This is how boards improve.
Well, and Jeff asked a specific question about whether or not the board wanted to use Super Eval. So I answered his question as to whether or not I prefer to use Super Eval.
You don't have to use Super Eval. We could use the NISP form and not do it electronically into it. But the problem is, if we're going to use the NISP form or any other type of form, it's definitely easier for everything to be compiled. Otherwise, the president needs to do it all by hand, and that's the beauty of the development of Super Eval that boards across the nation use.
And I am only one person who says I don't want to use Super Eval. We are a, we are a whole board. So if the board decides to use Super Eval, we use Super Eval. I'm just giving my personal opinion.
And I'm just stating that there's a difference between Super Eval and the NISP form that's uploaded. So I'm trying to figure out, do you not like the NISP form and the things that are being evaluated? Do you not like the computer system program that is uploaded into?
I, I'm not a fan of the Super Eval program.
I have a question. I did read what you said over a couple of times, and I've read the district, our, our goals on our webpage for twenty-two, twenty-three. I'm just a little bit confused as to not why we need more goals, but I thoroughly agree we need to work together as a board. I thoroughly agree we need to have discussions and meet and discuss things that come up. I felt that when we met with Derek and the communication that we had, it was a good night and a good fit for those who couldn't come. And Tony, I'm not, no, I'm sorry you couldn't be there. I missed you being there. It was a great night for a new person. I kind of liked that format because I think we were, I liked that format because we were able to just kind of sit and communicate with each other. Nobody was judging anybody. We were just able to say what we wanted to say. There was, we could discuss things that came up, and I felt like I was a member of the team. And I thought, well, the next retreat, we'll just use that moving forward and we'll go on from that. And I'm not saying I don't want to use any standardized form or anything, but I just, I just, I'm kind of confused with this whole process. And to me, it's like, just, I don't know what people want. There's no, I don't know. I don't know where to go.
Sorry. Did you, did you want to jump in or?
I'm lucky.
Okay. Independent of whether we use Super Eval or NISP form, I really don't care whether or not we use Super Eval. NISP form, I mean, it is what it is. It's a kind of a standard form. But if, kind of going back to some of the, the concerns that were brought up, one of them, you talked about communication and, and being able to hear from the community and have them have a voice in. I mean, should we just have a goal around, you know, being able to provide open forums or listening sessions and, you know, for student focus, to, to student groups? If we're representing the community, the greater community, to community forums? I mean, the superintendent holds open forums, the luncheon learns, the, you know, is there any reason why the board can't do that as a goal?
Glad you brought it up, Matt. Because that's in this.
I'll use it.
Yeah, it is. My, I read this when I was on vacation, and I have it all like marked off. And my intent was honestly to have it, an outline done for each chapter for everyone's ease, but I just haven't had time since we got back into town. But this would achieve that one part if that's a goal that we want. And I think that's a very important goal, because one of the main things in here is making sure that the board is communicating to all of the different stakeholders and the message or the intentions of our decisions aren't, you know, because it's just gotten very different with social media and all the different avenues and making sure that what we decide and the reasons why we decide it are effectively communicated to all of our stakeholders. And yes, that, I don't remember that one point was in this, but that is something I thought about. You know, do we have just invite people, just have conversations? Do we have, make it more formal, you know? Do we, for students, do we go to students like during lunch, people who can come or after school, whatever, and just answer students' questions about how boards run or things that are important to them? I don't know. I don't know, but that's a great idea.
Well, yeah, I just thought it'd be, you know, I know we have public comment sessions. You know, it's at eight o'clock at night and, you know, and it's not very comfortable. You're sitting here at the table and feel like you're at the Inquisition and, but, uh, so, but if you're, if you're in a room full of people who have, you know, want to talk about something or something, it'd probably be a lot more comfortable for the constituency that we're trying to serve, whether that be, you know, a group of students who may not be old enough to vote, but we're still trying to serve. It might be for a group of voters, you know, that may not have kids in the school. It may be, you know, a group of, of employees and that. That's another constituency that, that we work with. So, you know, it might be just something to think about in terms of, if communication is a goal and hearing from people, which is what you advocated for earlier with the candidate night as well, you know, the current board, election aside, can do that in and of itself with, you know, with what's going on and going out and listening. And, and, you know, yes, it does provide an opportunity to communicate out, but I think that those forums are a better communication in.
If there was some way to create some kind of suggestion box or something like that? That's kind of what I was looking to.
So I'm wondering, I'm thinking about communication and I'm thinking about accountability. And I, I think the two can be aligned, but there are also very distinct differences, right? So when I think about the board, to your point, Jen, my wondering is, you know, we are expected to hold Superintendent Thompson accountable, right? Our role and responsibility. Who, who's holding us accountable? One aspect, you have the voters who voted us. We serve a three-year term. The only way they can hold us accountable is voting us three years later. What are we doing in the interim? How are we holding ourselves accountable? What does that look like? So if the mechanism, the, the Super Eval is not the, the best tool or resource to use, what other procedures or protocols could we use to gather data about our effectiveness collectively as a board? How do we do that? So, and, and in the piece with the communication, I think that's just, that's part of that process. I think we can definitely, some of the ideas you've all come up with, I think is a vehicle to gather data, but also to make connections and build bridges with the community. So it could serve many different purposes. I just, I'm just wondering, how do we hold ourselves accountable as a collective unit? And if we don't, I think to your point, Jen, you know, we have to demonstrate and model what we're expecting not only of our, our school community, our superintendent, the cabinet. If we're not modeling that, then I just wonder, then why are we here?
Tanya, can I, I just want to... I'm hearing everything and appreciate everybody's input, but I think we need to backpedal a little bit because one of the first questions was, are people satisfied or they want to continue Super Eval? Super Eval is just the platform for us to put in our goals. And right to your point, Tanya, if we're, we're expected to hold other people accountable to do the right thing, then we need to hold ourselves accountable as a group, as a board. And if we don't have goals, then it just becomes dysfunctional or individualized. But I think it, the three new members didn't have an opportunity to use Super Eval yet, so you really don't know. What I learned from Super Eval last year was just as long as everybody else. And I, it was a tool. You put it in there. It gave you the information. And then what I was hearing from existing board members that have been here much longer, that in the past, everything's written out, then it's, then it's up to the leadership, board leadership to combine everything, make sure everything's covered, and then spit out some type of conclusion where the system itself does that. So, Tony, I'm not pointing you out, but you're the only one who said that it's something that you don't prefer. What is it about Super Eval that you don't care for? Or we go around the table and everybody's fine with Super Eval, then that discussion's off the table, and then we just work on what we need to get into Super Eval, which are the goals.
I, I don't particularly like the user interface of Super Eval. And I, and I didn't like the way it presents the data. So, you know, but again, I, I'm one person of the board.
But to your point, when you look at this data, you get a, you know, a circle that says effective with a moon or half moon. I'm trying, and looking at the reflections and comments, it doesn't really tell me much. And I, I wonder what evidence, what, is there any evidence? Or does this particular platform allow you to document evidence? But once again, I don't, I don't know. But if I were to look based just on reflection and comments, I don't know if it gave me the perspective, it didn't give me a deeper, richer sort of idea of, of what, you know, all the work this board did last year. I don't see it necessarily, some was much, some of the responses were much more deeper than others, more extensive. more extensive. So, I don't know, to your point, you know, I, I get you.
I appreciate that. And that's really the, the user interface and the way it presents the data. I don't, I, I just don't think it presents the data effectively.
I, it presents the same way as the evaluation we did for Superintendent Thompson. So did you have concerns with how that was put together? Because it's actually, the document, it's all aligned and almost the same. So did you have an issue with, um, the results of the compilation of all of our work with his?
I, I don't have an issue with the results of the work, of our work. Uh, I, again, I don't like the user face, I, the, the user interface of SuperEVAL. I don't like the way it presents the data. So as Tanya said, it gives you a half moon, like, okay, half moon means good. Full moon means, you know, full circle. I, I, I just simply don't, I don't appreciate that in a professional atmosphere. I, I guess that's one of the ways to put it. And I also agree that it doesn't necessarily present all the data in a easily digestible and understandable way upfront.
So what I'm thinking is, we have three people who haven't used it yet. And what that is, is a, it's a starting point for conversation. It's not the true evaluation. So not, it's impossible for all nine of us to actually evaluate every single one of those checkpoints for Superintendent Thompson and maybe even some of ours. You mean, one of the things I discussed with Jason was, you know, some of the wording and how those things should be scored, you know, for a rubric, you know? If it says two different, we do two out of three of those things. Well, is that developing or is that effective? You know, and making sure we're all on the same page. So that's something new. But really, that's not like the evaluation. It's a way to start a conversation. Compiles the averages, everyone's thoughts on particular points. And then the ones that are very far apart are the ones that we focus on and discuss. And in our case, come up with goals, but how we get to the final, um, the final report for Jason. So I guess what I'm asking is, did you have a problem with the program as well when you were doing the superintendent evaluation?
And again, the answer is yes.
But with the way it printed out, were you not satisfied with the way we went about the conversation for the points that were farther apart? Like how he rated himself versus how as a board, we rated him?
I don't have a problem with the contents of the evaluation. I don't have a problem with our work on the evaluation. I have a problem with the SuperEVAL platform.
So.
I don't like the user interface. I don't think, uh, uh, developing a half moon, I don't think that that's the best way to present it. Now, I, I appreciate our work with that. I appreciate Jason's input on that. I, I think we did a very good job as a board to, um, take a look at what we could in Jason's first year and then develop further goals on that. And, um, I think we're doing a great job. And I think Jason's doing a great job. I still don't like the SuperEVAL platform.
Can I ask a question of the board members who utilized Dickle Board Goals, like Toby, Matt, and Jen, and Jeff in the past, when it was all handwritten? Do you think the results of those, um, how they fell in comparison to the use and the information that was then compiled out of SuperEVAL? And I'm not saying, Tony, just to continue to use SuperEVAL. I'm just trying to think, what's another resolution? Because if we go back to the handwritten one, I'd like to see and hear the differences between the two. And I don't know, are there other platforms out there that we can use? So I just want to try to get a foundation to go forward instead of moving backwards.
I guess I would, I guess I would go back to, what, what are we doing this all for to begin with? Because, um, as far as I know, the output of the tool, and we're spending a lot of time talking about a tool, but I think really, why are we even using a tool? Or why are we even doing this? You know, and I heard accountability to our stakeholders and all that. Are we, I don't believe we compiled a report and released it to the school district and to the public. Or am I, this, or did I?
Are you talking about the board's self-evaluation, Jeff?
Yes.
No, we didn't. That was just our own internal operations for improvement, based on our own self-assessment.
Right. Okay. So let, so let's pull that thread a little bit. So we're doing this all for our own good internally, the nine of us in a, you know, in a closed space here. This isn't, so we don't have to worry about, you know, the perception of the public or anything about the outcomes of what this board evaluation is going to do. Or any of the words in it are not made public. So, you know, we're spending a lot of time talking about a tool when, you know, and where I'm going with this, this, you know, Sam's point of, when did she feel, and I don't want to misquote her, but, you know, when did she feel most comfortable about working on this board? It's when we sat around and talked. We, we didn't use a tool in that room. We didn't try to figure out, you know, is SuperEVAL better than NISBA's form or whatever? We, we talked about goals. We talked about where we were headed. And we talked. We didn't debate about a tool or anything. That's not going to be made public. That's not going to help our constituents know whether we met our goals or anything like that. Um, it's an internal tool. So, um, my previous thing about the tool was not whether we should be using SuperEVAL or the NISBA tool, it's, do we even need this formality around it? You know, or should we just be talking about and potentially documenting a couple of goals? That's fine. Um, but if we're not going to report out to it, to our constituents and stuff, then we're spending an awful lot of time for something that, you know, is only impacting the nine of us and only the outcomes impact the nine of us. So, you know, I don't care what tool we use. I don't care. As long as we know where we're headed and we're working as a group to get there, um, we can evaluate ourselves however we want. Because, you know, unlike the superintendent's, um, evaluation, which is required by his contract that we have to deliver, I mean, that's a completely different, um, formality than what we have to do as a board. And I'm not advocating that we don't have goals and that we don't discuss this and we don't track how we're doing to them in any way. But, um, I think we're getting spun around the axle on a tool that we, that is completely self-inflicted because we don't have to do that to begin with. And I just feel like we just spent a half hour talking about a tool that we don't even have to use. We're, we're, I think, losing track of what the ultimate goal is. And that is, that we're all on the same page, working towards a com, you know, a common set of goals and heading the district in the right direction. So.
So, we're not mandated by law to do it. So you're, that's accurate. Um, it's highly recommended for effective boards. Um, it's one of the things that you do to be a highly effective board. I can check with legal at NISBA, but I believe that any board goals are, it's a public conversation. So therefore, you know, setting goals, which should be great. As some of us have said, modeling that to everyone else that we oversee who set goals. Um, obviously, if you're going to set goals, you have discussions and you be proud of the work that you've done and hopefully achieving those goals. Are all goals met? No. But you're always striving for them and you have little goals to get to the bigger goals. I just see this as part of the steps to do that. But, you know, I'm only one person and I, I'm very confused by the, I'm very confused by the debate. I just know that since I've been on the board, we've attempted to do it. And what's done with it is absolutely nothing's been done with it because no one's taken the time to compile all of those, um, forms that were filled out that we discussed around the table, you know, in the district office conference room. Like nothing was ever done. So it was a meeting where we met and we filled it out and we talked and went nowhere from there. So if we're going to go nowhere, I guess we can find better things as a team to do. But to Sam's point, you know, when we met together, that was professional development for team building and we started that conversation of goals just because that was part of the agenda. But the goals are developed by exactly those types of conversations. So it's just formalizing it and holding ourselves accountable to that and hopefully achieving that goal at the end of the year.
So when we met with Derek and he started, started discussing the goals at the end of the meet, at the end of the retreat, I, I have the email that Jason just again forwarded us, um, which he sent to us, um, beginning of the school year. At the very bottom, it says, "Board of Education Priority Work as a Team for Twenty-two, Twenty-three", and it lists three things. My concern is if, uh, open dialogue, sit around the table, say, that's fine. But I know I had to reflect back to what those goals were or we started talking about goals. And that was only two months ago. So if we don't have some place specific where we talk what we want to do, how are we going to remember or filter back to, this is what we wanted to do, guys? This is, you know, X, Y, Z. Ninety percent of board members attend at, at board meetings. Um, it's just to hold us accountable, um, I guess to one another and to ourselves. But I guess my thought, what I'm saying is, it happened a month and a half ago, two months ago. And I, I can't speak for everybody. I'm speaking for myself because I had to reflect back to it. So that was the start of a goal, but none of us, nobody has spoken out right now saying that they even remembered that. So having it in writing, to me, I don't care what format it's in, but I do think, you know, we, we are leaders, a part of the leadership is the district. And a good leader is having goals and being accountable and passing that along. So I know it seems like we're arguing, but next to me, not arguing, we're debating. We have to come up with some type of resolution, whether we use school, not school, um, SuperEVAL. It, it's just, what I'm hearing is, are we creating goals? I think, I personally think we should have goals, but then where we put them is the second step of it. But I could, that's my opinion and I, what I want to say.
And I, I think we should focus more on what our goals are going to be rather than how we figure out, you know, how we're going to track them, I guess. Like, we haven't come up with one goal in this whole discussion.
I like where Matt started.
Well, then I'm a little confused then because what we started with Mr. Ho, Derek Holly. Dorsey, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes. So Derek, Dorsey, I thought, for me, that was the start of a communication and what we felt with. So right then and there, and then maybe that's why I reflect a little bit first at the attendance. Not saying we have to go there, but we did discuss that. And now nobody, and now I feel like that wasn't discussed because it wasn't out and we don't have it in front of us.
I think we can use what we have. I don't know if everyone's looked at the email, but like you said, both, most of them were based upon attendance. So maybe we can have one goal based upon attendance. Maybe we can have one goal based upon how we are meeting our constituents' needs and one goal based upon how we're going to meet the students' needs. And we just have to figure out how we're going to measure that. All right. Kind of how we make goals.
We need to have measures and that's what Derek was trying to put us on that one attendance. If we chose to use that as a goal, we may not.
Right.
Um, but we definitely have a goal, what type of measure, you know? Do, you know, to Matt's point, you know, do we all look through this first? Then have like, you know, a conversation, take a, you know, each meeting a few minutes and just go a chapter at a time and see, maybe put together some sort of plan going forward. It may not happen this year, but maybe going forward. Is that a goal? You know, our goal is to read first chapter. Do we want to do anything with this as a team? Is this worthy?
So how about that big goal number one, read that pamphlet? Boom. Right?
And we could just, as a team, just establish a benchmark each meeting. Okay, or we, we think we can do the next one by the next meeting. I mean, we could do that.
I mean, like, we're, we're all having a great discussion, but at, at some point, we just have to come down to, what do you say, come down to brass tacks and just focus on what we're trying to accomplish and accomplish it. Like, the discussion is great and fantastic, but we're just spinning around in circles. So let's say whoever wants to write them down, one goal is to read that book by the next meeting. October, it's October third. It's not very long.
It literally took me about an hour.
Yeah, I've looked at it a lot.
And I highlighted the whole thing. So it doesn't take that long.
All right. And so I, I know these are goals for the entire year, but maybe if we start with short-term goals, then we could come up with long-term goals and make them more manageable and even make, you know, goals where, all right, step one is this, step two is this, step three is this, and then get to where we want to get or something as well.
Is a goal, do we want to engage with the different stakeholder groups? Is that a goal that we want?
Find out a way to get information from our stakeholder groups, whether it be a suggestion box, an online platform, or like what Matt was saying, right? Isn't that what you were kind of saying?
Yeah.
Or to have an open conversation, you know, have a day where people can just come and ask questions or walk around and talk to us and that kind of thing. That could be a goal.
I, I do like that goal. However, that just adds another, um, time for us to be together and have that and where we're having difficulty trying to fit in dates and times.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know.
I love the idea.
No, I, I just, I didn't envision like an open forum being something that absolutely everybody had to be at every time. I mean, maybe you have three or four and you try to get, you know, two or three board members to be there.
Or could that be considered a retreat, meeting with the community? Having people come in and have some melon and a soda or something and you just chit chat?
Anything we have to do would have to be informal and we couldn't have more, we couldn't have quorum present.
Okay.
So that, like rotating, Sam, I see you waving.
So then maybe that's our goal, come up. I think you're turning yourself off. Uh, maybe that's our goal, come up with a way to get the computer, community more engaged or to engage more with the community. That's, and then we can think about how we want to do that. Whether it be have a couple of, like, coffee with the, with the board or bonding with the board. There you go. Buy t-shirts.
Go ahead, that's good. Um, I just, and I find myself doing it too, Wayne. But first we said, okay, we all agree that we read chapter one. That was a goal.
There you go.
Okay. But now you're saying that's, another goal is to, and I don't care if we continue making goals, but is that where we're going or we're going to take each meeting and say, this is one goal? Um, because like, again, we're just going back to the.
I'm just trying to make goals so we can move forward.
So we usually, in, in the past, we usually have a session like a retreat or something where we establish our goals. We usually don't do it during open forum, you know, on the fly like this. So, I mean, because it takes, it takes a while. It does, it, it's not something in a, well, the listing on the board there says thirty minutes for board roundtable. I mean, it's not usually something, we establish all our goals in a thirty-minute board roundtable. So a bit more focused, but, and we are hit past ten o'clock already.
All right. And this is, Jeff and I had a conversation, you know, how we wanted to handle this because, you know, Tanya and I had communications too about how important goals are and getting them established as soon as possible, whether it's superintendent goals or our goals as a board. And, you know, the concern was all the doodle polls that were going out with extra nights on top of the already, um, scheduled meetings. So Jeff and I, you know, had a conversation and we were going, we opted not to have an other meeting, which I agree with Jeff now, that that's absolutely what we needed. But we're going to try and do it here and obviously we need us, an additional session. Is that what people are asking for? But that, you know, people don't have time and attendance is an issue. So I'm not sure where to go from here at this point.
I have a suggestion.
Or we do it. Go ahead.
Although our next, whenever our next retreat is, November fourteenth, if that's the day that we're going to do it, why don't we set, make that meeting, discuss our goals and how, how we're going to move forward, whether it be communication, whether it be.